Closed session, and we're now back from upstairs. And the first item is council comments. And I just wanted to start by saying, a couple of us, and I'm sure some of you out there had the pleasure to come down here last night for the performance by Oreca TX, the Basque musical group. And for any of you who missed it, it was a treat. And I wanted to give credit to Councilmember Robinson and his Basque heritage for bringing this group to town. And if you could just say a few things about it, I think it was one of the best performances I've been to in a long time.
Yeah, thank you. And it showed off the capabilities of this room. The audio was superb, and there were three screens, one behind the performers and one on either side. And their performance integrates with a video performance. And I will thank the four musicians in Oreca TX, Inigo, Michelle, Mikel, and Harkites, and their sound guy, Ander, and David and Art, also sound guys who are here, and Nick and Alvaro of our own staff, Sam and Jordana, who are with the Basque Club in Washington, DC, and my spouse Sally, who is being very gracious in helping put up the musicians and the sound guy in their two days here. So I thought it was a spectacular show. I'm biased, but I was pretty proud of them.
Well, I think everybody who was there was wowed. I talked to a couple -- the room was full. And I talked to a couple people who came like, "Yeah, we'll give this a little try, but we'll be ready to duck out the back." And they stayed for the whole thing, including both...
Encore.
Encore.
Right. It was a family-friendly event, too. A lot of kids here, and the kids really responded. It was a good -- a lot of elements in the performance made kids laugh.
Could you say a couple of words in the Basque language?
Let's all count to five. Is everybody ready? Bat.
Bat.
Bi.
Bi.
Iru.
Iru.
Lau.
Lau.
Post.
Post.
Bat bi iru lau post.
I'll remember that. We're all now honorary Basques.
You are. If you speak it, you're an honorary Basque.
Councilmember Clay.
Let's see. I have a couple comments. I'm still interested in addressing the issue of traffic calming response for the folks who live on Auburn and Devonshire. I brought this up a couple meetings ago, and I got a response from the city staff that traffic calming is now no longer being done by our city staff, which is fine in terms of the design. But I think what the folks on Auburn and Devonshire are really looking for is someone to come and talk to them about what the range of options are. They may decide to just request speed bumps, but I think they want someone to come and talk to them about what's in the range of possibilities, which the police chief has already met with them once. It's been over a year. And we had a little bit of conversation about that. But they haven't received a response to their request, and they've made the request a couple times now. I've received a few emails this week from people who live along Ethan Allen Avenue that are unhappy with the condition of the road. It seems to me like maybe there's a letter-writing campaign going on. So what I want to say about that is that the condition of Ethan Allen has been a challenge for a long time. And the fact is that a major challenge to addressing, repairing the road has been who owns the road. And the state has claimed they've owned it. They've acted like they've owned it. They have run the permitting process for the road, which is part of the reason why the road is in such deteriorated shape, because they issue the permits and then they don't ever follow up when someone makes a cut in the middle of the road for utility installation, which deteriorates the road. And at the same time, you know, the state doesn't allow you to work on their property. So it hasn't been legally possible for the city to just go fix the problem any more than we could decide we were going to stop traffic and fix the problem on New Hampshire Avenue, which is within the city boundaries. Before the end of the fiscal year last year, kind of right before the end of the fiscal year, the state finally decided that they did not own the road and that we owned the road all along, at which point we were like, "Great, so now we can fix it." And we put $125,000 or $150,000, I can't remember what, into the budget out of reserve funds. So this particular repair didn't affect the tax base. And at the same time, due to work of people on the council, the mayor, I think some staff people are delegate representatives, we actually got some movement from the state on what we had asked, which was that if they were going to dump the road on us after they had allowed it to be sort of ripped to shreds, if you will, that they would at least put it back into some kind of condition, because we might have maintained it all along, and it would have been less expensive than the kind of deferred maintenance situation that we have now. And the mayor came back and reported that, in fact, there had been some movement, and we expected that we would get an answer sometime over the summer break. At that point, we pulled the money from the budget, because we didn't want to have the money glaringly there in the budget for the repair, so that the state would say, "Well, you've already budgeted for it. You can just go ahead and do it." So we pulled the money with it in mind that if we didn't get an immediate response, we could do a budget amendment after the new fiscal year started, so that we could go ahead and repair the road, thinking that if we didn't get a response, we'd be able to repair the road before the winter set in this year. So what happened is, we did get a response. It was a positive response. They've said that they will repair the road. They've said that they'll repair the road in this fiscal year, which doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to repair it before the ice comes in December, but they will repair the road in this fiscal year. At this point, I think we're still trying to get them to repair it before the ice comes. We have some negotiations that we're engaging with them. The primary issue is not so much who owns the road, but who controls the permitting at this process, who controls whether or not it gets to be widened if they go that pathway again, and whether or not we can do something as basic as repaint the crosswalks when the crosswalks get worn down, because we were also told by the state when they owned the road that we dare not even consider painting a crosswalk across it. I think that those things are worth waiting for, for a resolution, because if we just accept the state's offer and they give the road to us, or they own the road and they make the repairs, there's nothing that's going to say that in two years from now, we're not going to be in the same situation again, because the permitting process isn't changing. They're going to continue to let people cut holes in the road and not have a way to go back and make sure that when people actually do those repairs, they're good, solid repairs. So in the final analysis, I believe that the road is going to be paved in this fiscal year. I don't know if it's going to be paved before December. I believe that we'll be able to negotiate that we have some sort of permitting control so that people don't cut into the road and then just, you know, throw some dirt and a thin layer of asphalt over it and walk away and leave it for the rest of us to deal with it. And I believe that they're going to let us paint the crosswalks. So I know it took a long time to get to this point with the state, and I think that people are frustrated that we just didn't plow out and fix it, but there are some things that you can't do. So that's the status, and so I just wanted to share that in a more public form. So that's that piece. I have a comment about the morning and afternoon edition. The morning and afternoon edition, my child is enrolled in morning edition now. She's gone about three times. And this morning, it says here, "Morning Edition operates Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m." So this morning, I came with my kid at 8:40, because even though we want her to go at 7 o'clock, she managed to drag her feet until 8:40 today. So we arrived at 8:40, and there was not anybody here in the building from Morning Edition at all. And the staff told me that they had already taken them over to the school. And so what I want to let folks know is that when they get taken over to the school, what the school does with them, and one of the reasons why I enrolled her in Morning Edition is because the school sits them in neat little rows based on their class on the hard, cold floor of the cafeteria, and they have to sit there in silence. And so if our staff is lining them up at 8:30 and marching them over to Piney Branch, then she has to sit there until sometime between 9:05 and 9:15. So she has to sit in silence on the cold floor with her feet crossed from, you know, 8:35, 8:40, all the way until at least 9:05, when they come and walk them up to their classrooms. And I think that's part of the value of having them come with the city program. The kids like the morning programs and activities, and I would hope that they would be able to stay here at the community center for as long as possible, until 8:55, if possible. And it says that the program runs from 7 to 9, not from 7 to 8:40. That's my comment.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. A couple of quick items. One, just glad to see that the police chief is here to give us a report. There's significant concern from my constituents about the burglary and street robberies that have occurred in the community. I'm so anxious to hear what the chief has to say. The second is just to follow up on the ride-on bus issue. I hadn't heard back from the city staff on when the 25er was going to go back to the small buses. I know they're going to investigate it, but that was two weeks ago now. So I'd love to hear back on that. The third item is another Maple Avenue item, which is the, almost a year ago, maybe more than a year ago, we sat down with the city arborist and discussed two options for how we could replace the street trees on Maple Avenue. The wrong trees were planted many years ago under the power lines. And if you go down that street, you'll see they're kind of Frankenstein-like in terms of how they've been chopped up. And this was brought back again to my attention, just because one of the trees is directly in front of my house, and it's now clear that it's dead. And that's what will happen to the other trees. And then we'll be five years down the road, and we'll still have the wrong trees in the wrong place, but they'll all be dead. And we won't have taken the time to put the right trees in the right place and have the five years of having them grow. So I'm hoping we can get back with the arborist soon on those two plans that he was going to mark out on the sidewalk for residents to look at. And then just the last item is if the city staff could follow up with MCPS on the renovation of the elementary school. The many times that they came to present here, overall, I think the renovation looks great. I am not complaining about that. It has to do with the planting and landscaping. So many times they came here to present, they showed a hillside covered with trees, mainly evergreen trees, to help screen the new roadway up the side of the hill from the residents who live across the street. It may be that they just haven't gotten around to planting the trees, but we just have a nice grassy berm there and no trees. So wondering if the trees are coming and when they're coming. So, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
The first one has to do with New Hampshire Avenue, where up at the, in front of the office building known as the 7676 Professional Building, there's a bus stop there in the State Highway Administration right-of-way. And behind that bus, adjacent to that bus stop are some trash cans, a couple colorful rocking chairs. Behind it is a wrought iron-looking fence, and then a slope. And what I've observed is that because that bus stop, apparently because of the bus stop gets so much usage, as it does, the trash overflows, the trash bins. There's actually a little trash bin that sits on the lamppost, and it's about the size of a quart of milk, I guess, so small. And then there's the one that the city helped put there, I think, that matches the color scheme. But there's an awful lot of trash that just is floating around underneath all this street furniture, as well as coming down off of it onto the slope, that I think is, even though it's on the other side of the fence, this wrought iron-looking fence, it's planted with, I don't know, some sort of ground cover. I believe it's still State Highway Administration property. But nobody's cleaning it up. I frankly have no clue as to whose responsibility it is to clean it up, whether it's the state right-of-way people that ought to be cleaning up that mess, or whether it's something that the city's responsibility, or whether there's some sort of a mutually agreed plan to work out, some sort of plan for keeping these kinds of sites clean. But it's, stuff has been sitting there a long time, and it's just accumulating, and it looks awful. And I'd hope at some point in time, we can get some clarification on who's responsible and then follow through with keeping it more or less tidy and making sure those cans, those big trash cans, get emptied on as frequent a basis as necessary. I do want to say thanks to the Department of Public Works in that regard for having recently cleaned out a lot of, oh, rubbish left behind by people, homeless people, apparently, sleeping behind the shrubbery just south of that area. A lot of cardboard and alcoholic beverage bottles and all kinds of stuff like that. And that seems to be, that was cleaned out, and it looks like that our Department of Public Works is doing a good job of keeping that that way. So thank you for that. My second comment has to do with the Tacoma Overlook Building. Tacoma Overlook, for those who are not familiar or are not Ward 6 residents, is a part of two towers, apartment towers, that stand behind the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, which we run. And one of those buildings of the two was acquired by a group called Tenacity, who vacated the building. I think that part was completed about a year ago, and for the last year, they have been literally renovating that building inside and out, every space in it, and doing a really nice-looking job. And as they finished sections of that building, they've been marketing the condominiums. They're moderately priced, no question about that. And people have been moving in, new, in effect, homeowners. I don't know who these people are. I just don't know. Part of the building is not even finished renovating, and so there's still many units left to be sold. But my responsibility as the representative of Ward 6 is to try to get those people to understand that they live in Tacoma Park, or they pay taxes to Tacoma Park, and that the city offers services for all of this. So what we are, I'm working with one of the residents over there. They have a listserv. And the mayor and myself and Barbara Matthews, our city manager, is going to be meeting, at least tentatively, on October 7th in one of the model units in the building to meet with as many of those condo owners as will show up, to help them so that we can all introduce ourselves to each other and kind of welcome what I consider to be a new neighborhood into our city. There's a lot of units in that building. I'm not really sure how many. But it's an exciting process, and I'm looking forward to representing those people. And I'm telling you this now, because if there's anybody who's going to be observing this thing, either in this room or on the television, I want them to know about it, who particularly live in that building or getting ready to buy a unit in that building. So that concludes my comments.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted you to know that Pat Lovelace sent our, his regrets, his health keeps him from being here tonight. That's our peace delegate. But I also wanted to remind the community that Tacoma Park, or I'm sorry, the Piney Branch Elementary Pool remains open into the new school year. And it was open all summer, and now it goes into the normal fall hours. And you can see those at the Adventist Community Services website at www.ACSGW.org. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I've just got a couple items. The first one I wanted to mention is to make sure that everybody knows about the passing of a truly wonderful resident of our city, Darrell Lyons, who was a longtime employee of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op, worked in the, I don't know what they call it, but the shampoo-soap section, and all over the co-op, and did all kinds of things. Just a truly wonderful person. He had brain cancer about two years ago, and he just died on Saturday. And he was a great neighbor and just a wonderful friend to an awful lot of people in Tacoma Park. And I wanted to let folks know about a couple of upcoming events in town. This Saturday, September 25th, from 10 to 1, it's the Tacoma Park Play Day, and that is at the Tacoma Park Middle School. The following day, Saturday, Sunday, the 26th, from 10 to 3, is the Fourth Annual Tacoma Antique and Classic Car Show. And that is going to be back in the parking lot behind the post office. I think it's usually been out after the farmer's market, but now it's going to be back in that lot at the time of the farmer's market. And it's also going to include a couple extra things this year. The Masons of Montgomery County are offering their Free Child Identification Program, and that includes a DVD video, DNA, digital photos, and fingerprints. And all information is given to the parents or guardians who bring the children there. No information is kept by the Masons. And it's also a fundraiser for Fisher House at Walter Reed, where you can vote for People's Choice Award and donate a dollar for each vote. And all that money goes to provide accommodations for family members visiting Servicemen in treatment at Walter Reed Hospital. And the final item is to remind folks that the following Sunday, October 3rd, from 10 to 5, is the annual street festival in Old Town. Any other comments? Then we'll move to additional agenda items and update. There are no additional agenda items. And just to point out a couple of upcoming agenda items and future meetings. Next Monday, the 27th, there's a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. And I'll also note the work session discussion, which is of proposals for revision to the tree ordinance and all related matters. That's the last item on next week's agenda. The following Monday, the 4th, there's going to be a briefing on plans for the Tacoma Piney Branch Park, the construction up there that's scheduled to take about 18 months. On the following Monday, the 11th, we're going to have a work session discussion of staff comments on the Task Force on Environmental Action Report, and then council discussion of the recommendations. And finally, the following Monday, the 18th, we're going to have a discussion of establishment of a redistricting task force as a result of the 2010 census, and a continued discussion of the Task Force on Environmental Action Report. So that's a couple of items of interest on upcoming agendas. At this time, we'll move to the public comment period. And if anybody in attendance would like to make any comments on anything not on our agenda this evening, so if you have comments on any of the public hearing items, on the traffic calming, please hold that for the public hearings. But any comments on any of the other work session items or anything not on our agenda, if you'd like to come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello. I am April Kissel at 111 Lee Avenue, and I have a funny story, and then I have two shout-outs. The funny story is, on Sunday, I was walking up Philadelphia Avenue towards Piney Branch, and someone stopped me in the middle of the street and asked me if I knew where to see my park was. And I went through my memory bank of all the little parks around here, and I couldn't think of it. And then they tried another pronunciation, and finally, the passenger said Tacoma Park. And I said, "Oh, you're in it." And then I said, "Do you know where you want to go?" And they said, "There's supposed to be a big event here." And I said, "I just left it at that, because we were all holding up traffic." But anyway, so people know they want to come here, even if they don't know exactly how it's pronounced. So the first shout-out goes to Sherri at Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. She gave the election judges working at precinct 1310 on Election Day snacks and goodies. I sent out about half a dozen requests, and she was the only one who helped us out. Panera said no right away. So we really appreciate that, Sherri. Thank you very much. And also, the pharmacy manager at the Shoppers on New Hampshire Avenue, I'm going to mispronounce his name, Efrem Mammo, knew that I did not have to pay cash for a medication under Maryland Physicians Care, primary adult care insurance that I have, despite what my doctor had said to the contrary. He knew right away that I could get it under Maryland Medical Assistance, so instead of $106, which was what CVS had priced it, it only cost me $2.50. He was really great, and so if you need a pharmacy, you should take your prescriptions to the pharmacy at Shoppers on New Hampshire Avenue, especially when he's working. I don't know what his hours are, but again, he's the pharmacy manager, and his name is Efrem Mammo, M-A-M-O. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Fruchel, and I live on Baltimore Avenue of Ward 1. I'd like to start by submitting a complete written statement, because I didn't have time to condense down much more, having only four hours. And also, there's a copy of a rough draft of petition that we started this morning. It already has more than 40 signatures, all based on the listserv in North Tacoma Park. This petition in part states that the residents of the North Tacoma Park neighborhood insist that the city manager enforce the city code, in particular, those sections of the code requiring permits for use of the parks. We further insist that it be a policy of the Tacoma Park to require the Tacoma Park Police Department to enforce these rules in a timely and consistent manner. And the reasons behind this petition are both frequent and longstanding, but were primarily triggered by a recent occurrence. Last night around 8:30, two North Tacoma Park residents and their two-year-old daughter were walking near Bell Ziegler Park, and there were two or three large SUVs belonging to a group using the park at the time, and they were blocking the sidewalk. And when this couple commented to one of the members of this group that this was an inappropriate place to park, according to them, a number of large, bulky, angry men accosted us, making verbal and physical threats, and fearing for their safety, they fled as fast as they could push their stroller. At this time, I will not state how the Tacoma Park Police Department responded, because I have no idea, but the impressions, as the obvious, of said couple were not positive at the time. So therefore, ongoing and recent events lead to an important issue regarding the permitting in Tacoma Park. We know that the city manager has unilaterally decided that permits are no longer required. However, the municipal code states that the city administrator and/or his or her designated shall issue permits for use of parks and public buildings in consultation with the principal user of the park and/or building. And the use of the word "shall" is pretty much unambiguous. If you refer to Black's Law Dictionary, it states that when "shall" is used in statutes, contracts, et cetera, it has the invariable significance of excluding the idea of discretion. It is imperative and mandatory, and it is particularly significant in those imposing a duty upon public policy. So this code item makes it clear that the city manager must issue permits for the use of parks. It is not a discretionary point. There are other points besides the municipal code to consider. Having a permit indemnifies the city against legal action. And the other important consideration is what happens when a permitted group confronts an unpermitted group. Hopefully, these groups will work it out, but the alternative is for the person to call the police department, and then they either have to wait a significant time before they can use the park, or worse, after the police have left, it is possible this group could return in physically or verbally harass the permitted group. So I would ask last at this time that the chief and/or captain, of course, he informed the council and residents of Ward 1 about this particular incident, and in general, their policy regarding incidents in the Tacoma City Parks. And thank you very much for the counsel ahead of time.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Hirschman. I live on Tacoma Avenue in...
Oops, sorry.
...in North Tacoma. And I just got home from work. in North Tacoma. And I just got home from work, so I didn't have a chance to see any of the email correspondence that Mark was just referring to, but I can relate from, anecdotally, there've been lots, there's been a long history of problems for neighbors near the park or across from the park, being, if not hassled, having their driveways blocked, having noise late at night, and not getting the support from the city or from the police that they would like. I'm not one of those people, but I have spoken to them. I've heard these stories. And so I would support that resolution as a nearby resident.
Thanks.
Kaye Daniels-Cohen, Ward 3, Sherman Avenue. And I've come here as the president of SS Carroll Neighborhood Association and an unofficial member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee to again remind everyone, September is Emergency Preparedness Month. I want to continue to ask you all to remind your constituents to make a plan, create a kit, and be informed for preparing for emergencies. Tonight, I've brought, I've given you all the basic, uh, basic information that we give out at any of our public functions in Spanish. There's several documents that are in Spanish, including Plan 9, which we give out in English and in Spanish. We always have these brochures available at every public appearance. I also have brochures for Preparing Makes Sense for Older Americans and People with Disabilities. Perhaps I should have brought these last week instead of the animal one and saved that one for this week, but I've got your people with disabilities and your, your senior adults. A lot, lots of times, these folks are a little bit forgotten about, so it's very important that their caregivers actually take a look. This information is very similar to information for, for anyone preparing for an emergency, to, to make a plan, make a kit, and then be informed. Both guides outline common sense measures for both groups so that people can start preparing for emergencies before they happen. The last small brochure, and these are FEMA, these are actually FEMA brochures, not Montgomery County brochures. The last small brochure is, outlines exactly what should be in an emergency kit. It's a little bit more involved than the Plan 9. The Plan 9 is actually nine items. I'm going to quickly run through all the items. One gallon of water per person per day for at least three days. I'm going to say five days. Food for at least a three-day, three-day supply, non-perishable food. Battery-powered or hand-cranked radio and NOAA weather radio with tone alert and extra batteries for both. We all have those in our house. Flashlight and extra batteries. First aid kit. Whistle to signal for help. Dust masks to help filter contaminated air, plastic sheeting, if, if we need anything like that. Moist towelettes, a wrench or pliers to turn off your utilities, a can opener, and that would be a non-electric can opener. That would be one of the hand-cranked ones, because if you don't have any electricity, those little puppies won't work. And then local maps. And that, of course, is what FEMA has, has produced. The other thing, we will be at the Tacoma Park Street Festival. We will be at Tulip and Maple Avenues, wait, Tulip and Carroll Avenues, and we will be handing out all of this information. And I thank you for your time and for everything you do for the city. I'll be back next week. I'll have more stuff.
Bye. Anybody else?
I'm calling Corvus, Ward 1, on New York Avenue in Baltimore. Two things. Right at our corner, there are a number of oak trees that are just suddenly dying. So it's, we're not sure what's going on. I just wanted to make sure that the whole city is alerted to that, because we just don't know what's going on. And we're hoping the arborists will come out and also work with some, some of the arborists that homeowners are having come out. The other thing is that the situation with the Bell Ziegler Park, formerly Jackie Park, I think that in our neighborhood, we just don't really know what the police response was. And this is to second the request. Could the police department tonight explain what was the response when this family with a two-year-old called and said that they had been verbally threatened with, you know, physical assault, and then had to run and felt that their lives were at stake, and that SUVs were parked on the sidewalk? Thanks.
Thank you. The, the chief is here, and he's going to talk. I'm not sure if he'll be able to address that, but he will be talking about things.
Good evening. Jim DiLuigi at 7106 13th Avenue. I recently was told by a neighbor that the city now requires a $50 payment for the arborists to come out and determine whether a tree can be removed or not. It's in certain condition to be removed. This was news to me. I don't know if it's news to the council, but if so, I'd like to request some consideration be given to changing that or removing that, since we apparently pay the arborists their salary. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we raised that. I'm trying to remember whether that was one that was raised or whether that was one that was instituted as part of the new budget.
It was more of a combination. There were certain fees that were raised, and there was new fees that were instituted. That one was just passing over this this year.
But the, the one that he's referring to was previously, there was no fee, or was, it was raised? I can't remember.
It was, no, it was $25, but it doesn't pertain to the arborist just coming out to visit and render an opinion. It pertains to seeking a permit or waiver.
Right. And if, if, if he gives the permit to take the tree down, there is no fee. The fee is only if
It is an application processing fee, and it is to cover the arborist's time, so it is not refunded.
Right.
We were told in order for the arborist to come out and make an evaluation, it was a $50 fee. That's what the arborist and the city told us.
Okay. Then we'll move to the city manager's comments.
Sure. There have obviously been a number of instances with burglaries as well as assaults, so I thought it might be helpful for Chief Rucucci to come tonight to address this matter. There are some reports prepared by the crime analyst at the council's place at the dais.
Good evening. You have in front of you a robbery bulletin and a burglary bulletin. But for the public that's listening, I will go through it, explain to them what we are doing, and I'll, where we're headed with these incidents. We are as armed in the police department as the citizens are with the recent events, especially the robberies. In the month of September, the city has experienced a rise in strong-arm robberies and armed robberies, four as compared to one in August. Handguns were used in two of the robberies, with pedestrians walking along the street being targeted. The hot item taken in most of these robberies has been cell phones and wallets and IDs. We have been working closely with detectives in Silver Spring, Prince George's County, and Montgomery County. We, there was two in Prince George's County over the weekend that are similar to ours, where there was three young African-American males involved in it. There was one in Montgomery County with a Toyota, which was seen last night was used. It was also involving three suspects. We're talking to both jurisdictions. Unfortunately, the descriptions that we put out today over the listservs and our community advisory is all we have at this point. No one got a tag number on a car, and none of the jurisdiction have it. So we are closely talking with them in an effort to try to identify these suspects and get them off the street. Concerning the burglaries, which we spoke to you about last week, we did have some good news, and then we arrested five juveniles in two different cases this week from the District of Columbia. We have an adult arrest pending in connection with the Hickory Avenue burglary, which will lead to two other suspects that we have pictures of but have yet to identify. The detectives believe there are two separate groups committing these burglaries. One group responsible for the burglaries in Ward 1, while the other group is targeting the area along Ward 2 and 6 in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. We were able, with the arrests of the five last week, to close, at this point, at least six different burglaries, and we feel we'll be able to close some more with some more. Continued patrol and follow-up by the detectives. Now, the question, obviously, for the general public, what are we doing? Well, obviously, every member of the department, and some of the officers are here tonight, just demonstrate our commitment, are aware of the robberies and burglaries and all the shifts, are spending a lot of time back in the residential areas, stopping any suspicious person we see that we don't believe belongs in the area. The residents have been really good. We've ran quite a few calls today, and over the weekend and last few days, from calls from the residents, we ask them to continue to call if they see someone in their neighborhood that doesn't appear to belong, or seems suspicious, or soliciting, or handing out pamphlets. Any of these things are suspicious to us at this point, and we want to have a talk with them. I met with the city manager this afternoon to brief her, and she's authorized an overtime detail for us. We'll begin an overtime detail tomorrow night, which will be covering around the clock with both plainclothes officers on both shifts, so that we can cover both areas, since we're having the robberies at night, the burglaries during the day, and then we have had some commercial burglaries at night. And we'll keep as many officers on the street in an effort to apprehend these subjects. This thing I'll never We will continue the details till we believe we've closed these people and got them off the street. I did see an email this afternoon from the mother of one of the boys last night that was beaten up in the robbery, and he's doing better, and I think he's been released from the hospital, which is good news. Obviously, we want people to be careful when they're out on the street at night walking, to be conscious of what's going on around them. We have both plainclothes and marked cars in the neighborhoods, and we'll continue to do so. We believe the concerns are alleviated. We made some arrests. And following up that, we think it's important that we give our community extra tips on how to protect themselves. And we're going to bring a program that's being done nationally to Tacoma Park, which is called Refuse to Be a Victim. We're going to be holding it in this room on October 26th and October 27th. And we'll be putting out a community advisory tomorrow on it, but this is a nationwide program. It's really worked well, and it's great for victims and for our residents. On October 26th, from 6:30 to 9:30 in this room, we'll have it for people from the age of 18 to 60. The following day, working with our recreation department seniors, we will have a special program from our senior residents, targeting especially our seniors in the two senior apartment buildings, but other seniors in the city, from 1:00 to 3:00, where it will be strictly for them. It'll be targeted towards some of the issues and problems they deal with. This program has been done in different jurisdictions. It's an excellent program. We're bringing in an outside person who does it nationwide to teach it here. We think it'll be really a great program for our community. It's a part of what we want to try to do in an effort to help our residents defend themselves against some of the crimes that are occurring in our community right now. Obviously, these crimes that have been occurring involve handguns, suspects that obviously, some of them are probably drug addicts from the arrests we made so far, but we want our residents to be careful. Do not resist. Do not put yourself in danger. Let, please call the police immediately when you're a victim, so we can get to the scene. And residents, if you see suspicious, continue to call. We're as concerned as everyone, and obviously, last night really upset all of us, and we'll obviously got a lot going on tonight, and we'll have a plan in place starting tomorrow. Concerning, I learned of the incident over in the park last night around 10 o'clock. It was on the phone, looking into it and spoke, had some communication with the city manager last night, today. The group in the park did have a permit. We did respond to four calls there yesterday. One was, two of them were for, one was for parking on the sidewalk. They were unloading food at the time, and we told them they couldn't leave it there. They had to move their cars, which they did. We came back a second time. They had put a SUV, because they were having some music in the park, and we had them shut down the SUV and keep the music at a reasonable level. We responded back a third time for loud music. When we put on the scene, there was obviously no music. There was a fourth call when they had this incident with the group around 6:30. The officer sent to that call was sent to another call. We had a serious personal injury accident on Pine Branch Road, where a car crashed into a house, so the officer took that as a priority call. When we got the call for the incident where they had been confronted, they did not leave a phone number or an address. I didn't get a name till 10 o'clock last night on the person, and I communicated with them via email, and am following it up to see if there's something we can do concerning the alleged threats and assault that may have taken place. We did respond back at 8:30 last night for a report of people in the park after dark. The officers got the call. We're on the scene in three minutes. There was no one in the park. I have listened to the tape from the complainant that called in. It was the same complaint on all the calls. We did respond on the calls. We were responsive and took the action that is appropriate. We are still looking into the incident, and I am following it up, and will be reporting back to the city manager concerning it. But this group was permitted. Other than the complaints for loud music and for the vehicles, that was all we had. That's not a reason, in our estimation, to shut it down unless they defy us. And as I said, when we got on the scene both times, the music had been turned down, and they moved their vehicles immediately, and were cooperative with us. We are looking into the other incident, but when they did call on that incident, they did not leave their name or an address, so the officer could go back to the residents once they cleared the other call. I do have their name now, and I have been in contact with them. I'll be in contact with them further. So I hope this alleviates some of the concerns and some of the other ones the city manager and myself and the recreation department manager will be working on. Are there any questions?
I've got a question, chief. On the, the general uptick in robberies and burglaries, I know that we're aware that every year around the change in daylight savings time, there's generally a similar pattern where there's an increase in crime. Is this, in your estimation, an early piece of that, or is this just something different? And also, I've heard from a number of colleagues in other jurisdictions, municipalities in Prince George's County, who have been having similar problems and wondering whether it's, it's kind of general in the Maryland suburbs, what your sense is about that?
I don't think it's as similar to what we've seen before, as we used to call the metro robberies. It's, it started a little earlier in looking at what occurred in PG County yesterday, and then the one in Montgomery County. The one in Montgomery County is so close, as I believe it's the same people. After looking and talking to our crime analysts and detectives this afternoon, I think the two in PG may be connected to ours. I think there's a group out here that's preying on people now. As it happens in a lot of these, they start hitting, and they get successful, and it's probably a lot drug-induced. They're looking for money to buy drugs. The good thing is, we've got the credit cards. We've got a watch on all of them and those that have been taken. But I think it's a little bit different, and it does scare me, and I am concerned because, because of the violence used last night. That's why I don't want people resisting. Please submit to what they do. They don't seem to hurt people if there's no resistance, or they don't try to run from them. So I think it's a little bit different, Mary, than what I've seen in the first couple of years of working here.
Councilmember Robinson?
I was thinking about how we might respond in situations like this. I know that cooperating with the, with the perpetrator is, is the right thing to do. I note that, I guess I'm assuming that if somebody is able to note the vehicle license number, that would be a great help to you. Am I right in that?
Yes. You, you've got to remember, when somebody's a victim, all they want is it to be over.
Yeah.
They've usually parked the vehicles far enough away from us so that we don't, we can't even get a good description or a tag number, and then they run to the vehicle. That's why we don't have a description on the driver in these last two robberies.
Right. I just, it's very frustrating, and I, I, I feel my constituents' pain and the residents' pain, and your frustration and not having more information to help track these guys down, and
But I got it emphasized. We've been getting a lot of great calls on the burglaries, and since we, we just had a call, we were sitting here for another call for somebody in a neighborhood. So, but continue to call. We need the public's help, and it is helping.
Eyes open and call. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Wright?
I might also just point out, I think the, the two arrests that were made previously were the result of residents calling in, right? So
All five arrests have been a result of calls we got, and obviously, some good police work from the men sitting behind me. But the citizen, it's a partnership. We can't do it alone. That's why we want to get a lot of people involved in this crime prevention program, because we want to make, protect our people, give them more. It's a different world today, and it's scary. I got several emails, and I'm sure you were copied from people. When you see guns, semi-automatic weapons being used, handguns, it's scary out there, and we know that, and we want people to be careful. and we know that and we want people to be careful and we want people to defend and be able to defend themselves and know what to look for. That's why we're trying to offer, this is a different program. It's never been offered, I think, in Maryland before, at least in Montgomery County. So it's a good program. We want to get a lot of citizens involved in this, especially our seniors because we think they're preyed upon a lot and especially our residents with the robberies that have been going down and the burglaries.
The two other issues, just wanted to reaffirm the desire to have the variety of issues around Jackie Park addressed. It feels like this is a little bit of a Groundhog's Day conversation where the issue comes up. We are a little bit better around parking enforcement and patrolling in the park in the evening and then maybe it dies down and there's other priorities, obviously. And then, you know, every year, so it comes back up, so I hope we can, we can address the issue. The third thing I just wanted to raise.
Can I respond to that?
Yep, yep.
We did have a detail the entire summer on the parks. And I watch Jackie Park. Obviously, it's been a concern and I watch it very closely. Other than one or two parking complaints, it really has been a very quiet summer in the parks, other than a few minor incidents, because what we've done is we've made it a detail. The officers have to call out there and I have a record of every time we checked the parks the entire summer. So it has been a detail. And the officer that handled the calls yesterday is very familiar. That's been her beat for the last two years. She is aware of it. She knows the complainants that are involved and she knows the problems and she knows how to handle the calls. And although I think we've taken some criticism here tonight, I've listened to the tapes, which I'm sharing with the city manager, how we handled the calls, what they saw when they got on the scene. We will continue to manage and look at the park and obviously when our residents call, we do respond to them.
And just so I can understand, I think I understand, but to make sure residents understand, when you say detail, that means the officer actually gets out of the car and walks into the park?
He may on some occasions, but he has to go by the park and then he's riding around. We're talking about Jackie, all the way around it, looking in, shining your spotlight, making sure it's cleared out at night. In some cases, they're getting out of the car and they are walking the park.
Great. The last item is something I think that's come up in the past, also requested by citizens, and I brought this up with Barb, I guess it was last week, this idea whether there's been any change in the technology related to surveillance cameras. And obviously, surveillance cameras are an issue that have concerns on both sides. There's privacy concerns, there's effectiveness concerns, there's cost concerns. And I think to date, when we've looked at this in the past, we've found that they haven't, that the technologies that exist are either too cost prohibitive or aren't particularly effective in helping to reduce crime. So I was wondering if you could lend any advice around whether there's been any technological innovation or if you're looking at this again. And of course, if we were to consider something like this, we'd have to have much more public hearing.
Well, you brought it up last week. We've been working on it for a week. The city manager, myself and staff are headed to Hyattsville tomorrow for a field trip, as our city manager calls it. We will see the cameras that they have set up. They have a pretty big system over in Hyattsville. They're doing a special demonstration for us. They're going to give us what they have, how it works, cost effectiveness. I have our research policy manager this time researching everything. It's being done locally, prices, possibility of grants, what it would cost us. So we hope to report back, well, at least have a good idea tomorrow because Hyattsville's probably as close as any jurisdiction to our size and some of the problems we have. I hope to be able to report back in a week or two with information. So we're definitely on it and we hope to report back. Obviously, with what's occurring now, surveillance cameras would be another tool to use in the fight against crime and we'll find out what it is, what it costs and present it to you and the council and to the residents and we'll see where we can go from there.
Well, I appreciate your diligence and following up on that issue and doing the research and I look forward to the discussion and do think we need to consider all the angles and proceed with caution if we were to consider something like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll now proceed to the public hearings that are next on our agenda. The first one is Sherman Avenue Traffic Calming and you get the sign up. Anybody who signed up in advance, we'll hear from those folks and then anybody else who didn't sign up, we'll also take testimony from you folks as well, so. And after we do the Sherman Avenue, then we'll do Grand Avenue. Three people have signed up for the Sherman Avenue hearing. Kaydangus Cohen followed by Erwin Mack and Jeff Trunzo.
Can I put third?
Sure, I don't care. Any order the three of you want.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Administrator. I come to you tonight not in my usual capacity. My hair is getting thinner with the several hats that I wear. I am the chairman of the Montgomery County Pedestrian Traffic Safety Advisory Committee as appointed by Mr. Leggett in the county council, but I don't come to you as chair because, come to you because of that position, so I'm not here speaking officially. For almost eight months, the Pedestrian Traffic Safety Advisory Committee had a subcommittee on traffic calming. The Washington Post had an editorial prior to that calling Montgomery County "The Hump Capital of the World." That offended us and we said, "Let's look into it." One of the chairman was a member of the Rockville City Council and he and his committee studied this for almost eight months before they came back with a recommendation. I sent each of you a copy of the study made. I did not receive a single acknowledgement that you even got it, so I'm not sure that you did. But I speak because of the concern that came out of that meeting as a whole and the committee as a whole said, "We now have a new option that I hope the city that I represent mostly will consider." We have speed humps, we have speed bumps, and now we have an option of a speed lump, L-U-M-P. The value of that one is that it takes care of the emergency vehicles, the bicyclists and the motorcyclists by setting up channels in these raised and elevated section of the road to accommodate those needs, but yet not accommodating an ordinary motor vehicle. And I distress that the city, which I'd like to see be on the forefront of things, either is ignoring the notice that the Montgomery County Committee sent out or is secretly working on it without my being aware of it. I'm trying to give you credit. I hope that you would look into the lump situation, which was quite clearly described in the text that I sent. And the ultimate resolution that the committee as a whole came up with was to not disturb the current program in the county of speed bumps and humps, simply because that would create potential psychological problems with people. As you know, the tragedy that happened in Virginia just a few days ago, when a stupid speed bump caused the murder to take place because somebody was angry about it. We recognize as a county that we have no jurisdiction over the municipalities, yet we would hope that because the county is taking the position that it must look into speed lumps, that the city would consider doing the same for the good that it has. During the time of this investigation, we had all the fire and rescue officials from every incorporated city, as well as all the police officers, I should say, police chiefs, and Chief Lacucci was one of them, and with a unanimous voice, they were distressed by the use of speed humps and lumps. It creates a challenge for them to respond to emergency. Yet the speed lumps has every potential of providing some support for those vehicles that have to use these roads. I'd be glad to answer a question if there's such a thing.
Just to clarify, right at the very end there, you said they were distressed by humps and lumps. You meant humps and bumps?
No, humps and bumps, thank you.
Okay.
Because the lumps hadn't even come to our attention at the time. Their distress caused us to do research for the better part of six months by a subcommittee and a rather comprehensive document was set out as giving a choice where the choice was possible.
Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have requested that the city look into alternatives. I had a number of them that I suggested, including ones like you were just describing. And so far, none has kind of passed the test, as it were. But I appreciate your adding to the push to try to look for some alternatives.
I speak as someone who has had some rib jabbing of living in hump city and lumps or bumps city.
You've taken your lumps, is that?
I'm getting my lumps. And I'm passing on the lump for you to consider.
Aren't humps disallowed in the county at this point?
No. Ironically, and I say this with some care. The word, use of the term "speed hump" has been denigrated somewhat because college students are stealing those signs for their dormitory rooms. Not speed bumps, but speed humps. And you can read between the lines if you choose, but there are also raised areas with another name that I can't recall right now, but the lumps is the only one that literally is manufactured with the idea in mind permitting bicyclists, motorcyclists, emergency vehicles to go through without significant inconvenience to them.
There are actually several different designs that are used that accomplish that same goal. It's not, and there's a number of them.
I'm not opposed to traffic calming, totally in favor of it, totally in favor of it. But I'm just asking that at least the city look into seriously leading the pack in Montgomery County with a innovative way of taking care of this traffic calming.
I see three more colleagues with questions. If we can do those and then keep going with the public hearing. Councilmember Wright?
Like I'm in the middle of a Dr. Seuss book. These lumps comes in humps and bumps. And like many ideas that come down from that end of the dais, I did not think of the one that Councilmember Snipper brought up, but I did second that and think that the city should be investigating it. In particular, we've talked about it as it relates to bicycles, but I think emergency vehicles are also important.
Councilmember Clay?
The first time I came to speak before the council, I was considering running for office and they had a, they had a piece up about speed bumps and I stood up and talked about how evil speed bumps are and how I loathe speed bumps. So I definitely agree with you. However, the constituents overwhelmingly support speed bumps or the right to put as many speed bumps as they would like in front of their own home. I've made some pretty significant efforts to try to talk to people about less onerous speed bumps than the design that Tacoma Park has adopted, which is a speed bump on top of a speed hump. There's actually standards for these things and the terminology that Tacoma Park uses does not meet the international standard. I don't think there's anything about our speed humps that we call them that are, humps are bumps. They, they meet the bump requirement. They jar you like a bump. There are some of them that I can't go over at slow speed on my motorcycle because it compresses my tires so much on the shock that it makes it pop up and I, my bike weighs like 550 pounds, so it's not really fun for me at a slow speed to deal with it while it's, it's doing this. So I have lots of empathy for this. I would love to find other ways to deal with this and we've been more successful at it since we've had speed camera money that we can use for pedestrian safety. So it changes the equation. We've got, we've got money in the account to spend and we've been using it for ADA, but we can use it now for more expensive traffic calming that doesn't involve using speed bumps like the chicane's and the circles and other, other types of things. We've been talking about traffic calming with, you know, lighted, flash lighting intersections and those kinds of things. And so I would support all of those. I will say that I did talk the people into, on Woodland Avenue into installing just a county style, which speed hump, actually. So because there were many bicyclists in the neighborhoods that wanted to go and utilize that and those are installed on Woodland Avenue instead of the city's onerous speed bumps. And it, with mixed results, the bicyclists were happy and the people who wanted the cars to slow down were not as happy because they, they may slow down to 25 miles an hour when they go over the speed hump, but they still go 30 miles an hour in between the speed humps, which is too fast on our city streets. So I think that's the issue is that there's overwhelming constituent support for, for speed bumps. So, you know, the one thing that we haven't talked about very much, which I did suggest a long time ago, was lowering our city's speed limit to 15 miles an hour on residential
Remembering that unless it's posted lower, it's 30 by state law.
It's 30, it's 30 miles an hour.
Councilmember Schultz?
Erwin, good to see you here. Basically, just to be, help our constituents be clear, is that the fire engines and the EMR vehicles or ambulances, as we used to call them, they have similar wheelbases? Okay, or I guess that's not the.
It's accommodated in the lump program.
Yeah, but such that if you have specific slots put through these, these little hills, we'll call them, okay, whatever, then, then either vehicle can, can pass through. And they're clearly much wider than.
Ordinary passenger car.
Because my experience is, is that, you know, a single, when a single wheel goes over a hump like that, it's much more difficult for the driver. You really, even because your car is not only slowing down in terms of its forward speed, but it's being twisted, which means you have to go even more slowly to get over them. So I can see why they would work. My question then is, are there actual examples in Maryland or nearby that, that your committee was aware of when it looked at this speed lump concept?
Not immediately. There was some, at some distance, John Britton, who is a colleague of yours as a city council member in Rockville, was chairing this and I believe some, several of these were on the West Coast. Some of the literature that I shared with you was not as clear in terms of pictorial evidence, but it is available and I'll be glad to ask John to contact you, Mr. Schultz, if you wish, to see if he can give you any more statistics or locations because that's a reasonable ask.
It doesn't necessarily need to be. Doesn't necessarily need to be myself that Mr. Britton wants to contact. I think the city or the city manager would be a great person for him to forward any, you know, empirical evidence, if you will, about this, this kind of technology.
The, in closing, the Pedestrian Traffic Safety Advisory Committee was not opposed to traffic calming and the use of some kind of a device to slow traffic down by a hill, if you will. The question was the extreme jarring that takes place or the, the hurt to emergency response people and yet recognizing that citizens have a right to be concerned about speeders in their homes. And it appeared like the lump, at the moment at least, was the least objectionable and yet also satisfactory in terms of providing traffic calming.
Thanks. Just one more quick comment from Councilmember Snipper and then we'll get back to hearing testimony from other folks.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. There was another suggestion I heard from a resident about traffic calming, that the residents of any street, particularly a narrow street, could use. And that is.
Or broken glass out in the street.
No, no, no. This is, this is perfectly legal and it's, I'll call it a informal chicane. If you know what, I assume you know the chicane business. That's where you have the bump outs in the street. And what you do is you agree where to park so that you have a couple of houses in which you park on the right side of the street and then a couple of houses where you park on the left and then the right and then the left. And you, by having the cars park that way, you require people to zigzag down the street. And it, it does actually slow traffic with the small probability that occasionally someone's bumper will get nicked by somebody who doesn't quite make the zigzag.
A modified version of that, it can be seen on Carroll Avenue in Montgomery County across University Boulevard where they did that. across University Boulevard where they did that sort of. The problem there was the snowplows decimated them at the snow.
Right.
And secondly, at nighttime, they're difficult to see. So I was instrumental in getting the county to put reflectors on the edge of the curbs in multiple locations. And there you'll see it at night in the hope that drivers could see it, because you can also see the black rubber marks up against the curb where they shut out. You can't win all things.
I wasn't talking about chicanes at all. I was talking about people just parking their cars to create the same barrier concept that the chicanes do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jeff Trunzo.
Jeff Trunzo, Ward Three, Sherman Avenue. Thank you so much for considering the traffic calming measure. On behalf of the residents, we're thrilled that we live in a city where we can have a discussion like this. And if I could add just one comment. I have family in Connecticut and in several neighborhoods. The alternative parking is used in a lot of neighborhoods. What they do is get a section of picket fence and it's simply put there in front of the cars so you, people really see something, so they don't run into the cars is the only barrier. So cheap, effective, you know, as long as people see it. But anyhow, back to this traffic calming petition. The, if I could, I'll sort of do it in reverse order. There, there's a number of things that are in the letter. Not everything can be taken care of tonight, we realize, but we just wanted the council to be, and the manager to be aware of all the pressures that Sherman Avenue feels that it's under in regard to cut through traffic and perhaps being the most desirable route between Maple and Carroll Avenue. And to give you a deeper history, going back 15 years ago when we worked on Manor Circle and the, the closing of Manor Circle, we enjoyed some substantial benefits then and when the original speed bumps were installed. But we, we felt that the time has come to sort of reevaluate the street and, and look at things again. So in regard to all the administrative things, myself and Kay Daniels Cohen can be the, the point person for the signs and the markings and that sort of thing, and we'll, we'll work out what needs to be done. In regard to the traffic bump, hump, whatever it's going to be itself, I, I live at the steepest part, 119 Sherman Avenue. My observation is that traffic, we have, we have a problem in terms of people perceiving the hill. In that people gain substantial speed going down the hill and go very, very fast. And conversely, people view the hill as a great obstacle and accelerate much more than necessary in their mind to get up it. And it's not uncommon to have cut through traffic going at 40, 50, even 60 miles per hour. So that's, that's really the impetus. I offered to put everything together. I'm not really the, the, the primary advocate of this. And I, I do want to present a balanced opinion that while everybody's in favor of traffic calming and everybody's in favor of signs and markings, there are a handful, or less than a handful, of people who have strong opinions that speed bumps are undesirable and they don't want them. So they're, they're, it is certainly not unanimous that, that everybody wants that. But I, unless anybody has a question, I don't really have anything else to say. I see that the city engineer has recommended that it be in front of my house. We'd be thrilled to have it in front of our house. I can't speak for my other neighbors. The more noise, the more they hit, the more I think it's doing its job. It's no issue for us.
Thanks.
Kay Daniels Cohen, Sherman Avenue, Ward Three. And tonight I'm coming to you as the president of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. And I am wearing my traffic calming device. You can stand on the corner of Hancock in this kind of an outfit with this kind of a radar gun. This is, by the way, a simple blow dryer. And you can slow traffic down immensely. I, I, you know, Jeff has talked about people coming up the hill. They don't even stop at Hancock. They just keep hitting it. Now that we have the two speed hump, lump, lumps, it, you know, it doesn't matter to me what they are, as long as they slow the traffic down coming through our neighborhood. We've got 30-plus children just on Sherman Avenue. That doesn't include Hancock in any of the other, other areas, plus many, many, many pets. And we just want to make sure that everybody, everybody doing cut through understands that we want them to slow down. They're not going to get there any faster. They, they will not get there any faster if, if they, if they speed through our little, our little street. So I'm underlying everything that Jeff, Jeff has presented in his very excellent, succinct, and intelligent fashion. He's done an excellent job with this, with this presentation. And we did have at least, I think it's, how many, we needed 70%? I can't remember the number. But whatever it was, we only had a couple of people who were not in favor. That included people on Hancock as well. So again, I thank you for your time and I thank you for all that you do for our city. And I'll take this hat off and my blow dryer.
And I've got pictures of you and we're going to put you on the cover for Halloween.
I'm glad, I'm happy to do that.
I wonder if you could tell, give us a date and time of the next time you're going to be out there on patrol with your hair dryer? Because you do have a Gazette reporter meeting tonight and I want her to be able to schedule a photographer.
It could be tomorrow. It can be anytime. I just kind of show up outside, sit in my little chair and, and, you know, read a book and check them out. And it will, believe it or not, when people see somebody pointing something like this at them, they will slow down. They think it's a serious thing, so.
It is.
Thank you.
Next you'll put it out there on a broomstick for 24/7.
Yes, yes.
Thanks. Anybody else want to testify?
I'm sorry, I didn't find a sign-up sheet. So I didn't get on the sheet. I'm David Schmalz. I'm in Ward Three. I'm on, on Sherman Avenue as well. I haven't lived on Sherman Avenue very long, about 15 months. But in my 15 months, I haven't seen a lot of evidence of a need for a speed bump or lump or hump or something on the lower part of the hill. Quite the opposite. I can rarely make it out of first gear going up the hill. I live just beyond Jeff at the crest. And I replaced my transmission this summer. It's a real difficult hill to get up. Going down, I think the problem is more mindfulness. If we would like people to go slower, it might be a great place to put a speed trap. It might be a great way to gain revenue for the city if it is indeed used by speeding cars. But I work out of the house and I watch the street. And in that part of the street, I don't see much of a problem with speeding cars. My big issue with the speed bump is I'm not sure I can get up the hill if there's one there. I would appreciate, along with Representative Snipper, some alternatives to an actual physical bump. In the West, where I've spent most of my life, some are using optical bumps where they look like a bump, but when you get there, there isn't one. And these are easy to paint and cheap to make. As a city of artists, I might, I might suggest that that would be a, a, perhaps reasonable alternative. Thank you for your time.
Perhaps a hologram too. And just one quick thing on the, you're mentioning if the city was to do speed enforcement and raise revenues, all, all tickets of all kinds, except for parking tickets, go to the state.
Speed camera.
Well, speed camera. But in general, moving violations, those are all state tickets. The money goes to the state. And they supposedly reimburse us for enforcing their law, except they cut it.
Except they don't.
Right.
Probably 90%.
Yeah.
Well, okay. To, to my point, I, I don't see a great need for one on the lower part of Sherman Avenue.
Yeah. I was just using the opportunity to educate.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else wish to testify?
Again, Mark Frischell from Baltimore Avenue, Ward One. I might as well take this opportunity to, to point out one other intersection I think needs to be looked at. I don't know exactly what we can do there, but it's the location, the four-way stop on Philadelphia. I think it's Holly, if I remember correctly. Just having, we had had an incident with my daughter about a year and a half ago where an SUV coming down the hill by the elementary school basically went right through the intersection. That was with the flashing light. That was even with one of the crossing guards. Liz there at the time, whistling and holding her hands up. And on talking about that, I found out that was apparently an intersection where a number of people had very, very close calls. And again, it's a very steep hill and one red flashing light is the only warning that you're supposed to actually stop there. And I don't know how that could be addressed. I mean, the only idea that I came up with was making it one way up the hill only, which would probably be better also for the school. But beyond that, I don't know what else we can do, especially since it's a state road. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. I call this public hearing to a close. And we'll now open the public hearing for Grant Avenue Traffic Calming. And we have three people signed up for that. And then again, anybody else who hasn't signed up will have the opportunity to testify as well. Shannon Earl, Rebecca Bjork, and John, starts with a C, but I can't read it, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Rebecca Bjork. Thank you for pronouncing my last name correctly. Not many people figure that out. I live at 229 Grant, and I volunteered to organize the effort on behalf of the residents on the block who were in favor of a speed hump to go through the administrative processes to bring it before you. There are three reasons why you should approve this. First of all, there's overwhelming and unique need for a traffic calming measure, an additional traffic calming measure on that street. Second, there's overwhelming support of the neighborhood, only one household in opposition. And third, the arguments that I've heard in opposition to it are, are not nearly as compelling as the need to, to preserve the safety of the children, both who live on the block and who walk on the street every day to and from school. The overwhelming and unique need point stems from the fact that there are three public schools that border this very small block. Piney Branch Elementary School, Tacoma Park Middle School, and Tacoma Park Elementary School. In addition, there's the park and there's the community center and the Piney Branch Pool. And all of these buildings and facilities create a lot of traffic in our neighborhood. Even though it's a dead-end street, there's a lot of vehicular traffic up and down. Because of the location of the schools, however, even more compelling in my view, the children walk up and down the street in the mornings and in the afternoon hours to get to and from school. And they rarely use the sidewalk. And people speed down that hill. They come down off, off of Piney Branch Road. They roll right through the stop sign at Darwin and Holly. And because it's a slope going down the hill and the existing speed bump is so far down the hill, they really come down at a high rate of speed. And there are many children who live on the block who are young, and we are doing our best to teach them to look both ways, but we really feel that there's a substantial risk of injury. Second, there's overwhelming neighborhood support. The petition easily surpassed the requirements set forth in the city code. The neighborhood meeting, which was well-publicized and, and well-attended, allowed everybody an opportunity to air their views. Several of the people who support the proposal are here in the auditorium this evening. A couple of them, including John, had to leave, but he wanted me to articulate his support on his behalf. And finally, the only reasons I've heard against the speed hump proposal are, first that it doesn't work, and second that it somehow makes it, creates more pollution in the air and it makes it more difficult for people to travel in icy conditions. I think the fact that the city authorizes traffic calming indicates that these do work to at least slow people down. I don't have any evidence to support the view that this causes air pollution or that it creates a hazard in icy conditions. I think the overwhelming risk to the children would outweigh those concerns in any event. And so I'm here to voice my strong support and thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. I see two questions. Councilmember Wright?
I just have a follow-up question because the, the residents requested, I'm supportive of the bump. I've talked to a number of residents on the street. But I just wanted to clarify one thing because the, the request, I think, is for the bump to be at 231 Grant. And the city staff in our, in our briefing suggested that if the bumps were, if we're to do two bumps, that they be placed equally distant along the street. So it'd be sort of three, a third, a third, a third. And I just wanted to check in to see if that was fine or if people had a perspective on liking where the bumps were proposed or where they exist now or if the third, a third, a third approach is okay.
Well, I'm, I'm the person who lives at 229 where the bump would, would be moved to--
Yeah.
--under the Public Works Department. I, I have absolutely no concern about that. The people who live across the street, who live next to me at 228 also signed the petition. Everybody, except for one family on the block, would sign the petition. And so I don't think that there would be any opposition to that whatsoever. And I think also, an exception should be made to the, the portion of the code about the length of the street because of the high usage of the street by children, because of all of the public facilities that are on this very small block. I think that need to protect everybody should overwhelm the, you know, the 600-foot length requirement. Is that what it is? Yes. Five, 300 to 500 feet requirement.
Thanks for clarifying.
Councilmember Snipper.
Any other questions?
Yes, it looks like there are at least two more. Councilmember Snipper.
I'm sorry, that light was on from previous.
Oh, Councilmember Schultz.
Let me ask, just a question for clarification. The, the people that you observe hurrying down that street or speeding, whatever you want to call it, from Holly down to, I gather, at the bottom, there's that sort of cul-de-sac. What is their business? Are they bringing children down to that location to drop them off at, say, Piney Branch Elementary School? Or is there other reasons that are people are, because it's a dead-end street, so obviously it must have something to do with picking up and delivering?
What I had, have observed personally is part of it is soccer games. Soccer game traffic on Saturdays at Tacoma Piney Branch Park. People feel that they don't want to be late for the soccer game. And even though they're transporting their own children, you know, they, they tend to just want to hurry and get there. You, I think you are correct that also part of it is people dropping off their children at Piney Branch Elementary School. And my, my neighbor is going to comment on a third reason, which I think is cut through traffic. People think that they can drive through to Maple Avenue. They don't realize that there's a dead end there. And so they rush down and then they do, go to the turnaround and then they rush back up to get out. They're trying to avoid the traffic signal at Piney Branch.
That would probably be a minority of, of those that are causing the problem, I would think. A minority percentage of, of those that are speeding down that speed. Let me ask you another question. This is just a little bit of a hypothetical question, but there's some reality behind it. And that is, what would, what would be the case, situation from your point of view if there were a technological way to prevent people, except for those who live on that street and use it, obviously, to get it to, from their homes, to prevent people from using that, that stretch from Holly down the hill with their vehicles? In other words, if you had a child at Piney Branch Elementary School or something of that nature, or a soccer match at the, at the athletic field there, you'd have to drop the child off at the top of that, of that slope? I'm not saying I'm going to recommend that or that there's a techn, a way to do it. I'm just curious to know if, if that might be something that seems appealing.
We actually discussed a similar hypothetical at our neighborhood meeting in the form of requiring permit parking only on that block. And people voiced opposition to that idea as an alternative to a speed hump because it would inhibit them from having people come and visit at their homes. People from out of town, family from out of the state coming and, you know, driving their vehicle.
I'm not talking about parking. I'm talking about vehicles using the street. In other words, it would be effectively closed off 24/7.
I think that would have the same impact that people who were visiting neighbors on, people who lived on the block wouldn't be able to bring their vehicles in and park and, and attend family gatherings and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. I just have an idea and we'll discuss it. I'll express it more in my, during the work session. Thanks.
Anybody else who'd like to testify? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Shannon Earl, I live at 231 Grant Avenue.
Okay. I thought, I thought she said-- Okay, I thought she said everybody else who signed up left. Sorry, welcome.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Very briefly, because Rebecca already pointed out that I think the third reason is that people do try and cut through. I'm home with my children, so I do watch the traffic on the street, and people do speed down, and then you watch the same car quickly turn around and come back up. I also know that several people have tried to come to our house, have thought through GPS units that Grant continues all the way through. And those people tend to be trying to skip the light at Maple Avenue, and so are in a hurry. Also, just to point out that there are 17 young children that live just on that 200 block of Grant Avenue, many of them elementary school or younger. I have a four-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old also. So in addition to all of the schoolchildren walking up the street, who despite the sidewalk that was put in last year, still continue to walk straight up the middle of Grant Avenue, there are quite a number of children that would benefit from having the speed bump, or hump, or lump. And where it's located wouldn't make any difference. We'd be perfectly happy to have it in front of Rebecca's house instead of our house. I think that would still do the job of slowing people down who are flying through that stoplight at Holly. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you John?
John has to leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Come in.
Name is Ray Cummings. I live on Grant Avenue. I'm the apparently lone objector. I've lived on Grant Avenue for 28 years, and I do have some observations about the traffic. I really don't like speed bumps. I don't like the fact, for example, when the trash trucks, the four that come up or down our hills every day, every week, two for the park, and two for the city, the recycling and the other. When they got, I can hear them come up to the lower hill, speed bump, stop, and then take off again. Put on a nice big cloud of black smoke every time they stop. It's just the fact of diesels. I have an organic garden right in my front yard, so I'm not real thrilled about the fact that the speed bump initially was going to be put right in front of my house. I happen to live across the street from Shannon Earl. The observation I have about the traffic is, in fact, it is a dead-end street. There are three main sources of traffic. Like I said, I've lived there for 28 years. I worked out of my home for a number of years. There's clearly a large number of people who drop off their kids in the morning. Surprisingly, they're extremely inconsiderate of the people who live on the street. They go roaring down the street, drop their kids off, and take off again. The second is, the soccer games on the weekends, every hour, hour and a half, there's the whole flow of traffic. My view on it is, if there's a way to reduce the amount of traffic on the street, it's probably more effective than putting a speed bump. A 20 mile an hour car can do just as much damage as one going 35. The park right now is probably the primary access on the weekends, and the only two ways into that park are the end of Darwin, where there's the official parking lot. Very few people like to park up there, because you have to walk downstairs if you have small children. You don't want to deal with the stairs. The other access to the park is at the bottom of Grant Avenue. I thought they were going to redo the park at some point. I remember reading when this facility here was being built, that the access, primary access to the park would be coming from below. If one could encourage people to access the park from below, that would take apart probably 90% of the traffic on the weekends, which is when most people are home and see this traffic. The sidewalk, which someone on the street requested, and I don't know how much it cost, was remarkably ineffective. Like I said, the kids go up and down the hill for the elementary school time. They go up at about 7:30, they're right down the middle of the street, and about 2:50 in the afternoon, they come out of the middle school, they come right down the middle of Grant Avenue, both sections. Don't even think about trying to drive down Grant Avenue at 2:50 in the afternoon. There's probably 300 kids driving down right down the middle of Grant Avenue, both sections, both the heavily trafficked one and the dead end. And there's a random number of cars, which I agree with Mr. Schultz, that on any given weekday, you don't know how many, go down the street and just don't pay attention to the fact that there's no outlet sign at the beginning of the street, which also is frequently obscured by the rain catcher. There's the little tiny thing they put up with the plants to catch the rain. So I really don't like speed bumps, like I said, humps, whatever you want to call them. If it goes further down the hill, I'm not real thrilled by it, because I still hear the traffic. I sleep with my window open. But I just wanted to voice my opinion, and if you could remove a lot of the traffic, I think that would solve probably 80% of the problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're going to get a briefing on the schedule on the park, but I believe construction is supposed to start in another month or so?
This fall, I think, in October?
So it's supposed to be starting within about a month. Is there other testimony?
Just, I'm Glenda Kapsalas. I live at 223, which is where one of the speed things will go. My husband is an emissions expert, and speed bumps do not increase pollution. If anything, they reduce it. A car pollutes more when it's going faster, and when it slows down, it pollutes less. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, not only do the kids walk down the street at school time, they skateboard down the street, laying down on their skateboards. Totally not visible, except we just hear this roar coming down the street, and you'll see a skateboard with a kid laying on it. So, I mean, the danger is incredible. I have just, we just pray that no one gets hurt before we have to do something about it because of a disaster. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, I will call this public hearing to a close, and why don't we move along to the Sherman Avenue Traffic Counting Work Session discussion? I was tempted to say, let's take a break, but let's see if we can move through these so that people don't want to stay.
Oh, I see.
Was staff going to speak to these?
I think that summarized within the cover sheet of the documents. You're looking at the Sherman Avenue one first. The biggest concern that the city engineer has there is the slope of the hill. Right now, the existing speed hump on that block is, basically differentiates the flatter part of that block from the steeper slope of that block. In fact, that block drops two different dimensions as it heads towards Maple Avenue. It has about a 13% decline, and then goes into about an 18% decline from the last third of the block. So there's a concern on our part about the safety issues involved with having a speed hump on a steeply sloped street. There are some streets in the city that are sloping that do have speed humps. I don't believe there are any that are quite as steeply sloped as Sherman Avenue that would have a speed hump. And that's primarily the issue there. As mentioned in the cover sheet, a speed hump could fit within the dimensions of the current city code, given that the requirement is at least 300 feet between speed humps and 200 feet from a stop sign. So there could be a speed hump added that would fit within that dimension.
And the, I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear on where the, if the speed hump were to be located there, there's room for it in the 13% grade as opposed to the 18% grade?
It would actually end up being in that Bappa dividing point, where the 13% becomes the 18%. So it'd basically split the slope. Would be, you know, rough estimate of that location.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, it's hard for me, and we have speed bumps on our street, and they're very effective, and I support speed bumps. But I'm sensitive to your comments about having it be on a slope. I don't know. Do you have anything else to clarify, Darrell, about the risks involved in putting a speed bump on a slope of that nature?
No, we haven't done a great deal of looking into evaluating that from a general engineering, traffic engineering, traffic calming point of view. It would not meet the recommendation of a sloped street. They would say you need to look at some other types of methods, which is not to say we have made our own way through the traffic calming decisions in the past. I don't have any information related to safety, traffic incidents, traffic accidents. It just seems like a reasonable estimation that you may have an increase in loss of control, you may have a difficulty in inclement weather, particularly rain and ice, with a speed hump on a sloped street. We don't have anything that classifies, clarifies, or provides any data to that regard.
And last piece for you. Some weeks ago, we talked about, this was in the context of Ritchie Avenue and the cutting off Sligo, when, as Sligo Park Hill's modifications were being made. You talked about speed, something to measure traffic. And there's also a gizmo that measures speed of traffic without anyone being there. I don't know if they still use it, but a couple of wires going across the street so that you can tell how quickly cars go by by measuring first, you know, the tires going over one of the sensors, and then the tire going over the other sensor. Do we have that kind of device in our?
We have a traffic counting equipment. It just counts, you know, almost like a clicker, a manual clicker, except it exists in streets. So we have a track. Yeah, it counts numbers of times over. I think radar is probably the most effective way of measuring speeds.
Because, the reason I ask this is, and I'm not doubting that people speed along these streets, but it'd be nice to have some kind of quantified, like, how many people speed, and at what speed do they speed? And so that we can evaluate whether it's a few people, or a lot of people, and at what speed are they going? I kind of long for that kind of, that kind of evidence to back up the requests for speed bumps. I do have some concerns about the steepness, and I know that this is another gizmo that we would have to have in our, in our ownership, and I don't know if those are, if you've priced those. If it's radar, does that mean that a radar is set up unattended to then feed into a computer to tally these kinds of?
I would need to talk to the police chief about that. I know that the speed trailer itself denotes speed. It records, and not records, but it prints, prints out the speed of the passing car, whether or not it records that in any kind of database. I'm not aware.
Yeah, I don't know. I just long for that kind of direct numeric feedback.
There was a time, years and years ago, when we did do more of a police evaluation of speed hump requests, and that was discarded and discounted in the past because of the interest in providing people what they had asked for, you know? So the issue of providing scientific evidence became less of a priority.
Okay.
Lots of lights. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. There's a speed bump, hump, Tacoma Park, whatever it's called, on the part of Maple Avenue in Ward 5, after you cross the Maple Avenue Bridge. And it's on a slope. I don't actually know what the slope is. And before it was put in, one of my neighbors was very concerned about being able to go up that hill in the winter. He's lived there a long time, and said it does get slippery. But since that speed bump has been in for several years, I've heard no complaints, and we certainly have had severe weather there. So I don't, well, I don't know exactly what the slope is. It's a definite slope, and was a concern of some of the residents on that street, and it's turned out not to be a problem. So I don't believe on Sherman Avenue that it would be a problem. In fact, it would tend to slow people down in icy weather, which actually would be a good thing, because that very steep part is really, that's a serious steep. And you do need to be going quite slowly to navigate it if the, if it's slippery. So I also very strongly support this.
Councilmember Wright?
Just had a thought about dealing with the steepness, which is, you could make the speed bump steeper going downhill, and less steep going uphill. I think you would still get the visual impact of going uphill, where people would realize there's something there, and would probably slow down enough, but they wouldn't have to deal with the problems that that might present in the weather. And then, obviously, going downhill, you would, you'd want the impact of having a very sudden bump, so that would just be one consideration. Just a comment on the data. I think the data would be helpful in some ways, but I do agree with Darrell that, you know, if, if people, a lot of people on the street want the speed bump, we're likely to put it in. And then the other thing about speeding is that, I mean, my brother's a police officer, and they often don't pull someone over. The speed cameras kind of do the same thing, unless you're 10 miles over the speed limit. And if the speed limit on the street is 20 miles an hour, or 25 miles an hour, and someone's going 25 instead of 20, or 30 versus 25, it seems like a very significant difference to someone who's standing on the street. So you're going to be hard-pressed to convince somebody, even though the data will show it, that the resident who's standing there, that people don't feel like they're speeding. Because a car going by you when you're standing or walking at 30 miles an hour seems incredibly fast, even though by the speeding measure, if it's 25 miles an hour on the street, it's not considered speeding.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had two questions. One is, you know, regarding the speed humps on the hill, or bumps, or whatever they're bumps. It seems like the, some of the testimony we heard earlier was concerned about vehicles going up the hill, and especially standard shift cars, whether there's any evaluation on how easy or difficult that's going to be. I know this is, I think, the steepest one I can think of within the city, and I know that our speed bumps, even our standard speed bump that we use now, still is pretty steep and maybe difficult for a standard shift car that's just starting up at the speed bump. I wonder if you've done any kind of evaluation on that? And secondly, while you're going to the microphone, if you're going to, the, I know we had talked some time ago, and I think probably the last few times we've talked about speed humps, adding speed humps, about discussing alternatives to speed humps. And I just wondered if we've done, made any progress in looking at and evaluating those so that we could have alternatives here in the city? Thank you.
We don't have any empirical evidence or engineering work done on the issue of manual transmissions, standard transmission versus automatic and speed humps. So that's not within the realm of anything we've ever considered before. I think suffice it to say, it depends, like most things, on the driver and the type of car you're in. Some will have more problems than others. The weather will affect it. You know, it's, it ends up being a kind of a car-specific, driver-specific type of situation. In terms of alternatives to speed humps, they exist. We do make efforts to integrate them into traffic calming plans when we have a community-wide approach. Again, just a broad brush approach, people tend to be more comfortable with speed humps than when we talk about chicanes, alternate parking, one-way, traffic restrictions. There's, there's less of a comfort level, and it's a much more difficult sell to engage residents in those types of alternatives. So we're not designing anything new. Those alternatives exist. We could implement them.
And the, the speed bumps are the only ones that we kind of have a standardized process for implementing, right?
Well, we have a design, an engineered design, for both a county and a city type of speed hump, and
And also a process where you can basically do it on petitions in a neighborhood?
Any traffic calming measure can be done through a petition process within the city. That exists currently. If someone were to want a chicane or a one-way street, they could go through that same process.
Okay. And then, as this was proceeding, did Public Works work with the neighborhood to talk about those alternatives?
We probably had phone conversations, just in general, as they were developing their idea and their concept. You know, we usually have some conversations over the phone with those folks that are interested.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I took the opportunity this afternoon, bright and sunny, to take my car up and down Sherwood, Sherman Avenue a couple times. Sherwood, Sherman Avenue a couple times because I don't live in that neighborhood. I wanted to make sure I knew what the Dickens everybody was talking about. And I noticed that driving up from the bottom there, Maple Avenue, and driving up, yeah, that is an extraordinarily steep hill. And it says here in our information that it's an 18 percent slope, so I suppose that is the case. I just don't see how a speed bump at that location is going to solve any problems. I mean, regardless of my feelings about speed bumps elsewhere in the city, I'm just talking about this one location. It just seems to me that for a car coming down the hill to hit a speed bump, as they sometimes do unwittingly, just as when the hill is getting ready to become an 18 percent slope and all of a sudden you hit that thing, I'd be a little worried about a driver losing control, which could create a little bit more havoc than if they don't lose control, particularly on rain, slick road, or at night, or a combination of both. Coming up the hill, I drive a six-cylinder sedan, Honda Accord. It's got plenty of power, but I found today that driving up that hill, there was no way I was going to mount that hill at 50 or 60 miles an hour. So I just don't believe that anybody's going up that hill at 50, 60 miles an hour unless they own a Corvette or something of that nature. No doubt, and I'll discount it all, what you're saying about your concerns about safety of children. We've got a mess of kids over in my neighborhood and I'm grateful for what few speed bumps that we have. I'm not sure a speed bump there is going to solve that problem or give you much, protect those children a whole lot more. Sherman, from my observation, it is in fact a narrow street and with cars parked on both sides.
Not.
One side. It's still a narrow street. You are fortunate to have one continuous sidewalk on the left side as you're going up the hill and a discontinuous sidewalk that sort of disappears at time on the other side. But there's no fences along people's front yards and I know in Tacoma Park, most of us hate the idea of having to fence in our front yards. We just don't do that. But, you know, I don't know any, you know, I would be as anxious as you are about all those kids on that hill. And I think maybe one of the solutions would be maybe to make that section of Sherman Avenue one-way going up the hill, maybe to get the police to detail a security thing in there more often, simply to, as they do, as we know, we read the police reports every week. They go around the city and station their officers at locations for a half an hour, an hour at a time. I would imagine, and I don't know, obviously, that the people that drive Sherman Avenue probably drive Sherman Avenue every day because of certain patterns of commuting and I would, or taking care of their kids, delivering and picking up kids and that sort of thing. Then after a couple tickets for running the stop sign at Hancock, you might see some difference. And so that would be a pretty low-tech way of pounding some common sense into drivers. I know we have a stop sign at Moorewood and Wildwood. It's been their four-way stop sign. And on Wildwood, you know, they'll sort of tap the lights to sort of salute the stop sign and just keep rolling, even though there's a speed bump on within, you know, 100 or so feet of the stop sign and it's frustrating as the heck. So I understand what you're doing, but I just think from a technical point of view, putting a speed bump on a slope like that is not a good idea.
Well, as I thought about this, I thought, gee, it would be nice if we had had a discussion about how steep a hill is too steep to put a speed hump on before we have a request to put one on a hill that is steep. And then I thought about how we would deal with that. And I think even if we did have a standard and we had said, you know, anything more than a 15 percent slope is too much and we won't put a speed hump on it, somebody would then come to us with a request for a speed hump for 16 percent slope and we would say, you know, 15 was arbitrary, we would do 16 anyway. So I don't know that numbers would ever do much for us in responding to a request for a speed hump. My sense of the history of speed humps in the city is that no Tacoma Park City Council has ever said no to a speed hump. And I don't think this one's going to say no to this one.
What the heck do we spend all this time?
Well, yeah, yeah. And I think that alternatives are great, but I go back to what speed humps are called in places in the world where I've been, like India, where they're called sleeping policemen. They're effective, all these other things, or the police going out and doing traffic enforcement, or radar, or anything else, in the end is just a stop-cap measure for the times that they go out there. And we've been through it numerous times and we know speed humps work the best. And I think we're going to put the speed hump in.
I would like to request that in the future we put these items on the consent agenda?
Do we want to go forward with the speed hump?
I think I would agree with Councilmember Siemens because otherwise, if this is something that we just are always going to do, then let's not bother putting it on the regular agenda. Let's just allow the city manager to administratively decide where they go and save us the time.
Or we could just do it and not talk so much.
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
Well, I agree. I suppose if I really opposed a speed bump, I would abstain.
You can always pull it.
You could pull it if you had an objection to it. But when we do talk about them, sometimes we address the issues of moving them around and sometimes encourage the Public Works Department to move something a little bit closer, a little bit farther, that doesn't fit quite in the exact regulations or make an exemption for that. So I guess it would be good to, you know, take a look at it more than maybe what we get sometimes for things on the consent agenda. But other than that, I agree with Josh. We should just talk less.
Anybody want to talk about this one anymore?
You kidding me after that?
Okay. We will put the Sherman Avenue traffic calming device, speed hump, on a voting session. And given our newfound resolve, let's move on to Grand Avenue traffic calming. What do you want to do about that one?
Same.
The concern my staff was putting it in before construction, that the street's going to be milled and overlaid at the end of construction. It had been on the schedule.
Yes, we've been waiting to resurface that street for park and planning to commence the playground renovation project, which has been in the works for quite some time. We understand it's going to start this fall. It's an 18-month project. There's a couple of concerns that were raised. One is during construction, there will be construction traffic up and down that street. The park will also be closed, so ostensibly you'll have no more traffic for people rushing their kids to the soccer game because it's not going to be there. However, you'll still have traffic for people dropping off kids and picking them up in the morning and afternoon with the traffic hours. But the assumption was that during the renovation of the park, there'll be less traffic in general. There'll be signage at the top of the intersection saying, "Park is closed, no access to park." My own opinion of construction traffic over speed humps is it's quite loud and noisy to those folks that are living adjacent to that speed hump and anywhere nearby. So to put that in right before you're going to have heavy construction traffic, you're going to have a lot of extra noise in the neighborhood. It will do some damage to the speed hump, not such that it'll, you know, turn a speed hump into something that doesn't exist. It's not going to eliminate it. There'll just be scrapes and cuts and it'll be much more worse for wear after construction than before. Then, of course, we're going to come in, mill and pave the street. We can't leave the speed humps. They all get removed and then replaced. So we'll have to replace that speed hump within a year and a half of putting it down. Speed humps generally, if they're put in well, last most of the life of the street. We have others that don't, but we would anticipate that that speed hump should have a lot longer life than a year and a half. So it's just a matter of replacing one pretty quickly after it was put in. And again, it's a council's discretion.
Thanks. Councilmember Wright.
And just the cost of the speed hump, I think it's $7.50 or $1,000?
$7.50 for those.
So it's about $55 a month. What, is the field actually closed? Because that's one of my, I think the park is under construction, but I think the field remains intact and will continue to be used for things like soccer. Is that not true?
Well, there's, I'll have to get the actual plan. There's some leeway of the field being used for a portion of the time, so it's not going to be closed the full 18 months, but it will be closed a lot. You know, one of the things that they will be doing is in the area of the current cul-de-sac, they'll be parking construction equipment and put in, using some of that area for storage. It's going to be a very difficult street for people to be traversing, you know, even dropping kids off at the schools, let alone, you know, for the limited time that there is any field use. I think it's, this one is one that, you know, I personally would recommend not putting a speed hump until the construction's done. I think that would be really tough. But I'm sorry, I don't have the schedule in front of me of exactly when the field would be versus the entire park design. The construction is supposed to start in October for the park work.
My inclination, even though it is only $1.85 a day, to, would be that in these tight budget times, I think it's a little bit hard to justify putting in a speed bump and then spending the $1,000 and then doing it all over again. And given that I think traffic will be slowed by some of the things that the deputy city manager mentioned, my inclination would be to wait.
And just as a reminder, we're getting the briefing on the construction on that park in two weeks. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. I concur. We should save money if we can and I defer to the Public Works Director on when's the appropriate time to implement it. But I'm also curious if there is a sign at the entrance to Grand Avenue that says that there is no outlet?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
Yes, I want to add my little two cents to of supporting, waiting until the construction and resurfacing and so on is done.
Councilmember Schultz.
I was struck by the point that was made here in the testimony, given the, you know, the location of the three schools, the public park, and the community center. And in the middle of all this, we've got a street, a dead-end street, that people carry, I mean, they're carrying their own kids, but they're apparently speeding down this hill, which stops at the dead end. I mean, it's just, and I'm just sort of wondering, I mean, I agree with what the three previous council members said about delaying, you know, putting the speed bump in there. And I guess it's a good idea. I'm certainly not opposed to it. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense when we rebuild that street after all the construction's done, that we use an entirely different kind of a surface on that street or something that makes it look different, almost like you would in a downtown where you're trying to create a pedestrian mall. Because basically, except for the property owners who have homes there and deserve to be able to get their cars and trucks, whatever they own, in and out of that street, there's no, there's no reason for other people to use that street. There's just, there's no overwhelming need, is from what I've heard in the evidence. But if they're going to use the street, maybe we could come up with a surface. And I'm not saying put, you know, cobblestones or bricks or anything like that. Maybe some of this thermoplastic cover so that when people go down that street, they know that they're not driving on a, just another regular street, that this is some kind of a pedestrian passageway in which we allow vehicles to use it, but it's not the other way around. And hopefully there might be a solution that would be economically very reasonable and responsible. And the other thing I would mention is that in terms of technology, I've noticed in several places in France and Germany where they have a system over there on some of those very narrow, one-lane streets that are literally cobblestones in the old-fashioned sense of the word, which are basically pedestrian zones, but you have businesses on there that need to be able to access delivery trucks or the owners of the businesses. And what they do is that they have a hydraulic post that lifts up out of the ground and next to it is a card machine. And so the business owners or the property owners, tenants, whoever is doing business or living in that thing, can access that street by just driving up, inserting a card like you would at gaining entrance to a parking lot. This cylindrical hydraulic thing disappears into the ground. As soon as the car or vehicle passes over, it pops right back up again. And the only people that can use that street are people that have the cars. And I've seen that in a number of locations in Europe. I think it's a wonderful technology and something that we, in a case like this, it's a very special kind of a thing, but I think we're talking about a very special place where there's probably the highest concentration of kids at any one place in the city at Tacoma Park. And we ought to really be real careful in how we come up with a good solution. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, did you want to speak and change your mind?
No. Yeah, I changed my mind.
And Councilmember Wright, you're taking his place?
I'll change my mind.
Okay. It sounds like there's agreement that we'll basically do a resolution that says yes to the speed hump and delay implementation. That's what I heard.
That's right. Let's move on.
Okay. Then that is the end of that item and we'll take a short break and come back for our remaining three items.
Three hours?
Three items.
Three hours? Enough of hours.
I said items, but if it's. Two items remaining, not three. We have postponed the final item, which is discussion of proposed hearing code amendments. We will reschedule that one. So we're going to just do the whether to request to change alcoholic beverage laws and discussion of the MHP request for a pilot. So if we can move to item five, what do we want to do about alcoholic beverage laws? Councilmember Robinson.
I like "I."
Actually, it's on mine. I appreciate that you take "I" because some of you didn't see "I," that's why I printed this that had the actual second side. So please look at the white sheet that's at your place that has the printing also on the reverse. And I also did want to make a brief statement about the article that was in the Washington Post on Saturday. Despite the headlines, as my understanding, you're not considering liquor sales. So the reporter obviously did not include that in his writing, but those who add the headlines did give a little bit of a skew. And so if somebody's watching this, I just wanted to be clear that the discussion so far has been about beer and wine sales. What I've. What I've asking from you, and I appreciate Councilmember Robinson's getting to the point, is a direction for the language for the resolution, if you wish to do a resolution next week.
I think after our speed hump discussions, everybody was feeling like we can do this in a more concise fashion. And I see some more lights. Your, your "I like "I" was what you're doing?
That's the extent of my comment.
Okay. I don't know what order they came on, so I'll move down the line. Councilmember Wright.
I like "H" or "I," with a slight preference for "H," but would vote for either.
Okay. Councilmember Simmons.
I am absolutely against this. I think it changes, it will change the character of Tacoma Park and the direction that we don't need to go. And I see no benefit to the city. And so, I say "J," none of the above.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like Councilmember Simmons, have wrestled with this quite a bit, and although I do think that veto authority is an improvement, I, I haven't, I haven't really been convinced that this is necessary, and I, I agree that there's not really that much benefit to city revenues and so on. So, I am opposed to any change.
Councilmember Clay.
I agree with Josh.
But it was your idea first, I think.
It might have been. I'll have to go and review the notes.
I do want the report to say it was my idea.
Councilmember Schultz, do you want to weigh in, or?
Oh, why not? I've already been duly chastised for talking so much tonight, which is well-deserved, I might add. And so, but since I'm already been guilty, I might as well just continue.
Just remember, just remember who votes for you, though. It's nobody on this diet.
Yeah. I'll try to remember that. I think I support B, Class B off-sale licenses and veto authority. I, I, first of all, I don't think there's a snowball's chance in heck that we're ever going to persuade the, Montgomery County to give Tacoma Park veto authority, because that, that, that happens, the county liquor board isn't going to be able to have any fun anymore. If they're just going to say their, their decisions can be reversed, then what's the point for coming, showing up and, and making decisions? And so, I don't think that that's going to happen, because other municipalities will seek it as well. So, I think that's a moot issue. No harm in asking. But I was also impressed by the testimony of the owner of the Roscos, who's talking about the ability to be able to sell off-sale beer and wine, because there's a ready demand for it, and it would help improve his business. And I think we have a responsibility to certain of our restaurants in the city to give them as much opportunity to do well as possible. I'd like to see a lot more restaurants like Rosco's somewhere in our city, because when we, it's just a, it's a very successful enterprise, or at least it appears to be. I don't really know. And when you think about the size, the people, the number, the number of people that live here, and the amount of testimony and opposition that we got to, some of whom testified at both public hearings, and there's nothing wrong with that, frankly, the vast majority, 99% of the people of the city of Tacoma Park are indifferent. There's a few people that spoke in favor of it, and slightly more who spoke against it, and the total number of those who spoke altogether is a very minute percentage of the people. And as the article in the Washington Post, I thought, pretty well pointed out, was that the demographics of the city are, have changed a lot, and they're, they're continuing to change. And I, that's, those are my reasons, so I'll leave it at that.
So, in terms of the options that are here, are you saying you are inclined toward B or C?
I'm inclined towards B. I would not go for C, because then, because I just don't believe that veto authority is ever going to be provided to our city. I don't want that to be a, a thing to prevent our being able to allow Class B off-sale licenses, which is to allow existing restaurants the opportunity to sell unopened bottle of wine or beer to their restaurant customers.
So, choice B is, try for it, give it our best shot, but if we can't get it, continue to go after B.
Yeah, and I, and like all the rest of us, I, I, this is, I've been thinking about it, tried to keep my mind completely open on this, because personally, it's, whatever the way the vote goes, I don't think it's going to be a significant impact on the city of Tacoma Park. If all of it gets voted down, that's, we'll all live with it just fine to another day. So, I don't think it's a critical issue, but if voting for it, this is the, the opportunity. This was the choice I would make.
Okay. And I would agree with Councilmember Schultz that choice B is a good choice. I have thought all along that there was reason to try and do something to expand the choices that are now available. I was aware of various people who had the thought that they would like to try and do something where there were some carryout sales, particularly in Old Town. There, I know that there were a number of people who thought that that might be a good business model. I think that we need to do things that encourage good businesses coming to town. I agree that, as, as an example, Roscos has, I think, made quite a difference in what comes to Old Town, and I look very favorably on examples like that. I was torn a little bit as we heard testimony from people feeling like, well, if this really is important, we're not hearing from people who, that many people who, who really feel that it is important, we're hearing pretty passionately from people who feel that it's a mistake. I kind of wavered a little bit, thought, you know, is it, is it worth the wear and tear on the hand to, to do this? And I just, I feel like we have to make the effort to try and do this and expand the options for types of businesses that can be successful here. And I think that going for the B licenses in a restaurant, as opposed to both B and D, where it's not a restaurant, they don't have the food and the, what is it, food seating and bathroom requirements is the difference between B and D?
That's right. Although, although the, most of the places have some limited seating, otherwise it would just be a carryout store.
I thought that D required bathrooms.
I don't believe it does. I'll double check.
One of those two requires-
Does food require bathrooms?
Food requires bathrooms, but I think-
I thought B, B is restaurant, B requires a certain, it's tougher, tougher-
River Dan and I, I'll say that in California, food requires bathrooms.
So, my, my sense is that there are five, five people in favor of going forward with B and veto. There are three in favor of going forward with B and D and veto. Is that a fair characterization?
I want to hear if, what, I think it's important that we clarify whether D requires bathroom.
I'm, I'm trying to find my paperwork on that.
I specifically remember saying that I thought the two options were okay, because-
Bathrooms are required for both sexes in D. There is no minimum seating requirement, and they, they don't have to meet the criteria for a certain portion of food sales, vis-à-vis the alcohol sales.
So, you can have, you can have food, you can have seedings, but you have to have bathrooms.
You do have to have bathrooms, but you don't have to meet the criteria, the strict criteria of a restaurant under-
The percentage of the sales.
Yes, there's, there's a number of criteria related to what's a restaurant.
So, given that, then, that B requires, but B is for restaurants that can then-
Because you, because you have the food requirement percentage.
And the bathroom.
The bathrooms.
And the seating requirements.
And the seating requirements.
Seating, and then you're allowed off-sale. D is a regular wine shop, but you have to have bathrooms.
That's right. It could be that.
Is that correct?
It could be that, yeah.
So, given that-
But you can also consume onsite as well, with D.
So, a Dega is actually D?
A Dega is a D.
Even though they probably need the other criteria, they, they don't want to be bothered with the percentage of food sales.
That's right.
I'd actually, I'll, I'll, my preference is B and D. But if the will is to go along with B, I would do that, too. And my preference is to require veto authority, but, but not knowing really much about how veto authority would play itself out, I, I would go along with asking for veto authority and seeing where it goes.
My sense is we have five votes for choice B, which is B and veto. We don't have four votes for B and D and veto. That's why I'm making that differentiation.
I think that assumes that Colleen and I would vote for just B. I'm not so sure that's the case.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. I know that when the, I believe it was, the person from Rosco's restaurant was here, he asked that they also be allowed to serve just a single beverage for takeoff. And I wondered if, if those are any of these that we're talking about?
Yes. There, there's not a requirement about kind of how many or the, the size of what somebody would purchase, and in fact, state law-
On any of these?
On any of these. In fact, the state law is very specific, that that kind of thing cannot be controlled. They're very clear that you can't say, you can't, they're very clear that you can't prohibit just a single beer being sold, or-
So, someone, you just go into one of the establishments that gets one of these licenses, get a single beer and-
That's correct.
And walk out the door with it.
That's my understanding. That doesn't mean that, that happens in a lot of places, because many times, there's kind of just a voluntary agreement by the operator about how, what they want to do. But the state law does not allow jurisdictions to restrict the size or quantity of the units that are sold.
But Roscos has at least expressed, the one gentleman's expressed an interest in doing that, and they also do that across the border in the District of Columbia, where the guys get their beer and go over to the park and drink. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright, did you want to?
I just want to quickly point out that if we just do B, that means that the co-op would not have the possibility of exploring, as they've expressed that they would like to, to offer locally-produced and biodynamic, whatever that means, beer and wine selections. And it also would mean that we couldn't have anywhere in the city, a store that would sell, would be similar to a Dega, which would sell, not necessarily expensive, because I've bought many eight and nine-dollar bottles of wine there, but a good selection that I think is thoughtfully selected and points out the, the value of different types of good wine, as well as beers, in, in the city without having a, a restaurant attached. So, I would just encourage, I'm not convinced, I'm not certain that I would vote for just B, so I would encourage my council colleagues, who are generally supportive of the idea. I know some colleagues totally oppose it, and I respect that, I just have a different opinion, to, to think about doing both B and D with the veto option, but not mandatory.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you for expressing it in that way, Councilmember Wright. I, much more along those lines. And one small point about the single brew, the single beer. The guy from Roscos said that some of the beers nowadays, the high-end beers, the fancy beers, only come in one, in a single bottle. You can't get a six-pack of the whatever Australian special brew or the local brew.
Councilmember Snipper.
This is more a question. I thought the beer and wine that could be sold had to be, had to go through Montgomery County's.
That's correct.
So, it isn't clear that they would stock locally-grown, organic, whatever.
My understanding is that if somebody wants to sell something that is not already on the list for Montgomery County, that they can petition and ask that Montgomery County then purchase it, and then Montgomery County gets its cut off the top, and it sells it to the local store. I have heard that some people have been frustrated, and they haven't been able to get what they want. But certainly, in a number of the shops, there's some wide diversity of products, so clearly Montgomery County recognizes that there's an interest in, in some of those different kinds of products. But, but you do have to buy it, you do have to give the cut to the county.
And they have to say yes, that they're going to get it. I mean, some of the frustration is that people want things and the county does not get it. They don't just go out and purchase the stuff just because one store says they want that.
I've heard, I've heard both things. The, you know, the county maintains that it, it's very responsive, some people have said they're not, so.
Different, different-
I don't have, I don't have an answer about how accurate that is.
I can, I can see the value in going for something like a Dega, that has always been in my mind a good example of the type of thing that would, I would want to encourage in Tacoma Park. Thank you for also reminding me about the co-op, that, that would, I think that is something that I'd like to encourage as well. And so, I'd be willing to go along with item H, B, D, and veto authority. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I should push my button. Consider it pushed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll all push your button.
Just don't push my button. Don't worry about that, young man. You know, I just, I'm thinking here, thinking about the, the co-op's need and the opportunity to, for, for that unique kind of business to be able to have that opportunity. And of course, they didn't necessarily say they would exploit it. They remain neutral on the whole thing, but, you know, I'm sure that if, if they had that opportunity, they would greatly appreciate. But I'd be inclined to go along with the "H" here, allow Class B off-sale licenses, Class D licenses, and veto authority, which means that we would at least try to ask, try to get an agreement on veto authority, but it would not, if we didn't, it would not keep us from advocating or asking our delegation in Annapolis to allow us to sell, have Class B off-sale and Class D.
Staff, have what you need to-
I think I have my direction. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm decent, if you like it.
Then we will move along to item six, discussion of Montgomery Housing Partnerships' request for a pilot for 7513 Maple Avenue, the Edinburgh House.
Okay. Just a brief introduction. Tonight, Rob Goldman and Praj Casbetta are here from Montgomery Housing Partnership to present their request for a pilot agreement with the city for 7513 Maple Avenue, a 45-unit high-rise located right across the street from the community center. They've owned the property since 1995, and in 1995, they received a pilot from the city, which was extended in 2005, and their 2005 pilot ended in, in June of this year. Also attached to your documents is a chart showing the status of the- Also attached to your documents is a chart showing the status of the current pilots that the city has, and so that will help you to evaluate the tax ramifications. So, Rob?
Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Not, not a problem. Totally understand. And I appreciate having the opportunity to speak, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Robert Goldman and President, Montgomery Housing Partnership. And Montgomery, as Linda said, Montgomery Housing Partnership, MHP, has owned Edinburgh House for approximately 15 years. When we approached this, we did sort of a moderate, light renovation, that's sort of all the property needed at the time. Now, 15 years later, and we own and manage the property well, but now 15 years later, the property needs really a substantial renovation. Boiler has not been replaced since we've owned it. It needs a very substantial placement of the systems. During the, with all that, we put in a new sprinkler system, put improvements to the bathrooms and the, and to the kitchens, and put in energy efficiency, provide greater energy efficiency, use green materials using the Enterprise Green Standards. And basically, due to the type of renovation, we just, Councilmember Snipper, was that our ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, where we finished property on Flower Avenue called Gilbert Highlands, and it was really a substantial renovation there, and this property would be a similar type renovation. You know, we pride ourselves as MHP. Just a quick background for those, I think many of us know us already, but quickly, MHP is a private nonprofit. We've been in existence since 1989. We do three things. We develop affordable housing, own about 1,100 units in the county. And it's through that, we have a number of, a few properties in Tacoma Park, probably have invested about 20 to $25 million in investments in Tacoma Park over the last 10 years or so. We also do community life programs. We provide after-school programs for kids. We do preschool programs. We do adult programs, which, there's a number of activities we do for our residents. And thirdly, we do what we feel, what we call neighborhood revitalization activities. We work in certain neighborhoods to pull together not just the housing pieces, but working to build civic associations, to build leadership in the community, to address specific problems in neighborhoods. So we, to be able to do all the work that we are looking to do at Edinburgh House, it's really, you know, we have financing, you know, some support financing from the county, some gap financing. We have money through the federal government as a one-time situation, so for this year, I guess they've extended maybe for a year and a half. But basically, a, what is called the new issue bond program, they're basically allowing bonds to be issued at about 4.5%. It's the lowest rate that we've really ever seen. So we're really trying to jump on that opportunity and trying to close under that, under that program, under some strict guidelines and some quick timelines to get it done. But really, to be able to do all that, and we've sort of gone out and tried to get as much gap financing as we can from other sources, you know, going to folks like Neighbor Works, going to the state's energy efficiency programs, just other sources that we typically go to, but to really to do all the work that we really need to do, we really need a pilot from the city and to continue basically what, a pilot. And as I said, this is sort of, we're really looking at the systems totally, and this is really a, you know, 15 to, or 20-year sort of timeframe. Much of the financing is sort of in a 15-year timeframe. So for their perspective, and from the people who are underwrite the deals from the bankers and all that, that perspective, they look at it from that perspective and, you know, look towards and, or, so underwriting this with the expectation that there would be, and hopes that there would be a pilot. So that's what we come here for, to you for. I'm happy to answer any questions.
First, thanks for your organization's commitment to providing quality, affordable housing in the county and in Tacoma Park in particular. And the Edinburgh was the first building that you did in Tacoma Park?
Yes, yes, it is.
And it's, it's good to see that there's, you have a chance to do significant upgrades even beyond what you did in 1995.
Thank you.
Councilor Clay.
So this started in 1995 with this building?
Mm-hmm.
And when you bought the building in 1995, what was the program that you purchased it under? Did you have some, did you purchase under like a 20, 30, 40-year program that required you to maintain affordable rates?
We bought it with a loan from a local bank, as well as some funding from the county. I don't know the term of the county loan. The bank loan is, term is coming up. It's September, it's, so we've just got to extend it. So the year, in about one year, that, that term, that funding has to be refinanced. And so we're sort of using the opportunity of refinancing to sort of, as well as actually this bond program, to say, let's, you know, this is the time, it has a lot of needs. And so the county loan in terms of the affordability restrictions were probably at least a 30-year restriction period. It's typically 30 to 40, and I just don't remember which was that was.
So we're halfway into the restriction period. So it's probably not a surprise to people that I'm not going to support 100% pilot on this project, because I didn't support it on the last one. I think 100% pilot is really hard for the city. And when you've come before us for the pilots before, where we've done a graduated pilot or we've given a 50% pilot, it was at the beginning of the, of the purchase point of the loan. And then typically, the argument from the city has been that we make an investment for 10 years, and we get 40 years of affordable housing in exchange, and it's been a great deal. And we made a 10-year investment, and then another additional five-year investment for the 30 to 40 years of affordable housing, and then you're asking us for another 10-year investment that is 100%. In the, in the form that Councilmember Snipper was smart enough to bring with him, and I was not, he, it says here that it's $23 a unit per month for 45 units, and my basic math skills tell me that $23 times 45 units is $1,035, which I multiply by the 12 months in the year, and I come up with $12,420 a year, which over the 10 years of the pilot is $124,200, which is more than half of the extra $200,000 that you, that you get out of, you know, what you say, the, I guess the pilot gets you in viability. Is that a word? Viability isn't even a word.
Viability.
It is incorrect.
10.23. All right. So, and, and, you know, it says here that you'll save $12,500 a year in energy costs, but the city will pay $12,420 a year, so that you can save the $12,500 a year in energy costs. I just don't think it's, it's fair to the folks in the city to ask them to go without any tax base at all for the buildings. If we had 10% affordable housing in the city, or 20% affordable housing in the city, it would be a different picture. But fully half of our housing in this city is rental housing. It comes under rent control. So the tax base of sort of that broader range of rent-controlled units is much lower than what it is for the home ownership units. And so it's a, it's a smaller pool of people that bear the, more of the cost of this, so it's, it's more significant. So that's the reason why I wouldn't support 100% pilot. I think 50% is the most that I would consider, and I don't really even like doing another pilot for the building at this time. It doesn't say that I don't appreciate the affordable housing and wouldn't bring things to the table or help with pilots for other things that go forward. It's, it's just a, it's a, it's a numbers game, and it's about the, the load of affordable housing that we can afford. You know, that it's, I think what is unfortunate is that in Tacoma Park, people aren't happy to have all kinds of affordable housing around them, or most of the people that I know, anyway. In a lot of communities, you have a hard time citing affordable housing, because there's so much not in my backyard to it. And so we have a lot of affordable housing here, but at some point, there's a, you know, there's, there's a cost burden that becomes pretty significant. So no tax revenue at all for another 10, 10 years for a property, I think is too much.
Councilor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you're doing there at the apartment on Maple Avenue at Ritchie. It's a very impressive job that you're doing on that building. I appreciate your purchasing that building, and it was vacant at the time. See, people crawl in all over that property every day, and they're doing a fantastic job. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I know that we were able to give you a little bit of help with that. Now, you know, I am always impressed with my colleague, Councilmember Clay's approach to these housing issues. She has much more experience and in-depth knowledge on the housing than I do. But I, I'd like to back up to my simple look at this, and my understanding from when you purchased this building was that, that you received a pilot at that time, and I believe you also received relief from the rent stabilization and committed to providing housing, mixed-use housing, or mixed-income housing for moderate to low-income residents. And I think when we've talked about this, and I wasn't on the council when, when you got the, the building in question, but I know in all the cases since then that we've seen, there's always been an understanding that you're purchasing the building and renovating it and getting into operation. And the thing I'm struggling with, with this is what makes MHP different from any other landowner who owns apartment buildings here in Tacoma Park, who is under rent stabilization and has to maintain their buildings and, and operate them in a, in a way that allows them to provide proper maintenance and upkeep of their property without relief from taxes and without relief from our rent stabilization law. And it's like, why shouldn't we expect you to maintain your property within the income that you've agreed with?
So, I mean, a couple of things. Is this on? I don't even, can't tell. But I, I think the basic thing, a few things. One, just to make it clear, by entering into this financing that we will, we'll be extending the affordability restrictions additional, I think, 30 years going forward. And so that is one thing. Yeah, so originally, it had restrictions that went, you know, were halfway through, but this, we're committed to another 30-plus years. And it's something we would do mission-wise anyway going forward. Two, the amount of renovation that's being put into this property is very substantial, and I, you know, I don't see many owners, because a typical owner will have a, maybe a five-year, seven-year, whatever timeframe they have to sell the property. We're taking a 30-year-plus perspective, so we're looking at the systems and doing a very substantial renovation, probably much more than I've seen really in the, to a typical market-rate owner. So that's one thing. Two, the residents there have extremely low incomes, and, and who, and they've lived there a long time. I mean, people do not move out of Edinburgh House, and that's maybe a testament to the fact they like it and the fact it's affordable, and we love the fact that they're there and they're staying. And so we want to commit ourselves to, you know, having a property that is high-quality, that, you know, is set up in a way for the long term. We're long-term owners. And, and, you know, what would a long-term owner do, I mean, what would a, I'm sorry, a market-rate owner do doing that much renovation? They would need to substantially increase the rents, I mean, and to make those numbers work. And, and so, you know, so we have, we're trying to sort of keep it, keep it affordable. We're trying to do the quality renovation that needs, that we feel is needs to be done as you look at the building. And, you know, when you do that amount of renovation, you now kick in certain code issues that were at one time, you know, you saw were grandfathered in, but that you now have to do, like a sprinkler system or other things like that. So the cost is extensive, and, you know, I think much more than you see a typical market-rate owner doing, and we're committed to that. We're committed to the quality of the building, the quality, so the residents have a decent place to live over the long term.
Well, I certainly, I certainly appreciate your commitment to affordable housing, and you've done a marvelous job here in Tacoma Park in helping us to maintain that, and especially helping us to address some of the buildings that have not been well-maintained. But again, I'm struggling to see what makes you different than the owner down the street that is in a market-rate or a rent-controlled building that has, you know, there's a building on Maple Avenue, right on Lincoln Avenue, that's in horrible shape, and has, and I would say, has tenants who are, and I don't know their income, but I would, we could only speculate that they are at least as low as the tenants in your building. So I have a real difficulty of seeing why the city should forgive taxes for you and not for them. And I have, I appreciate your, your commitment to the moderate-to-low-income tenants, but the building down the street is committed to following our rent control limitations as you will be in 10 years.
But they, a few things. I mean, a, an owner putting in that much money would be making it a, would not have the commitment, and not be required to have the commitment of keeping the rents affordable and keeping low-income people there.
Okay. I'd like our housing department to address that question.
And what they would have to do would be substantially increase the rents. Under rent stabilization, they are allowed to, with the amount of renovation they would do, they're allowed a, I forgot what you call it, but a capital improvement increase. They would take advantage of that increase, and they, and they would move the, the market for their building to a much higher level and basically effectively displace many of the residents there. And we're trying to basically keep the residents there, but also do the amount of work that we feel is necessary.
I appreciate that. Could you address that, Linda? Thank you.
Well, the, they would have to file a fair return petition, which is a little different from a capital improvement petition. Capital improvements are taken into consideration with a fair return, but essentially, you're comparing a base year rent with the, with the income and expenses from a base year, and you're comparing it to the income and expenses for the current year. And, and that's how a fair return, you, you know, our rent analyst would decide whether the owner was making a fair return based on increases in rent from the base year to the current year.
So if they replace the elevators in the building, then they would be able to increase rents to...
It's not straightforward as it used to be in the capital improvement petition. Previously, in the capital improvement petition, whatever capital improvements you, you did, you automatically got a capital improvement rent increase based on the cost of the improvements. This capital improvement is one aspect of the fair return petition, but it's not as straightforward. You have to show, you know, that you're not getting a fair return.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I'd just say that it is complex. It's not as simple as, as some of the other ones that you've brought to us, and so it's going to take some additional consideration. Thanks.
I mean, on that, I would, I would assume... I mean, on that, I would, I would assume, and I'm not as familiar with the law and the ins and outs of that, but I would assume if you're taking on the additional debt, the only way to get more return is to have, have that rent increase. You wouldn't have the return if you're taking on more debt to do the capital improvements.
Thank you. And may I, I could just say that maybe we're going to need more information from our Housing Department before we actually vote on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The panel we got says that 90% of the units at Edinburgh House are occupied by tenants with incomes of 60% below the area median income. So usually, when you talk about affordable housing, people talk about it's that it's 60% of the area median income. Is that correct? So this would suggest that people, 90%, are making 40% of median income. Is that, is that not correct?
I don't think that was the intention. I think our estimations, and we're still kind of doing all the income certifications, but I, I think that the notion here is that we're anticipating that 90% of the residents there will have incomes below 60% of median income, of the median, area median income.
Yeah. And is that what you're, is that, is that what they will be, or is that what you're committing to in the 30 years with the county? What's the commitment to?
I mean, that's the commitment we're making. From all indications, that that's our sense is that's what it, that's what it is.
Okay. I just will point out for the audience, Mar, I know you know this, but median income in Montgomery County is close to $100,000. So we're talking about people who are making $60,000 a year or below.
Right. And just to clarify, that's for a family of four?
Yep.
And so then it's adjusted down for families of three, two, and one. Many of these units are one and two bedrooms, so that's, for those units, they're, that's slightly less.
Yep. And then, I was just sort of curious about a couple of things. When you take something like this to the county, do you give them like the full financing deal that you're, you're looking at? Because we're being asked to invest $12,000 a year, but we don't know anything about how the rest of the financing works, or, you know, basically what the subsidy is, you're getting from what sources and what the, the numbers look like. Is that things that you typically provide to the county when they give you loans and permits? And maybe you did provide it and we didn't get it from the staff?
I'm, to be honest, I, yeah, yes, we, I guess we have given something to the staff. We can share it with you guys. It's, but basically, yes, our, basically budget, effectively our budget for the project.
Similar to Councilmember Clay, I have a little trouble getting to the 100% number. I'm incredibly supportive of your work, but I think the challenge for me is similar to Councilmember, Councilmember Clay, is that, you know, Tacoma Park supplies a significant amount of affordable housing in the county between many of the wonderful deals and relationships we have with you all, as well as through our rent stabilization rules, which do, you know, incur real costs in terms of lost property tax to us. So that's the challenge a little bit for me. And, and wondering what happens to the deal if we give you a 50% pilot as opposed to 100% pilot? What does that do to the, to the nature of the deal?
I mean, I mean, effectively, it creates a gap. And so we have to figure out, you know, what our options are at that point. I mean, you know, we go back and don't do some of the renovations that we feel need to be done, you know, find some other way. You know, we, it's a gap. We, it creates a, it makes us a problem trying to get the deal closed. But that's what we try to, you know, we'll have to try to figure out if we don't get 100%.
Thanks. I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Slipper.
Thank you. I am very supportive of MHP's mission. And I've been very impressed by the quality of the work that has been done in Tacoma Park. A number of these units are in fact in my ward. And you have been very responsive to the tenants who have essentially, in desperation, appealed to you and you've kind of come through for them. And, and some very amazing, actually, accomplishments in being able to do that. I was thinking of 641 Houston, which was not even on your radar until the tenants came around and said, "Can't, can't you help us out?" That said, I, I too have a, a problem with the 100% pilot. And I have a couple of questions that might help on this. Could you say a little bit more about the extension of the, abiding by the, by the area median rules a little bit? Are you talking about from 1995, you're going to extend it, 30 years from there or 30 years from now?
From today. Well, from the day we close. From the day we close, we, we'll be extending those requirements for at least 30 years.
So you're saying, let's say it closed before the end of this year. So you would be talking about 30 years from then. Okay. So that, that does help for me. I did have a question about the energy savings. Usually, people think about renovations for energy efficiency as paying for themselves. The payback period might be 15 years, in some cases shorter, in some cases longer. But usually, it's a, in a sense, a wash, if you will. So I do wonder, you know, why do you need a pilot then? Because they are, in essence, going to pay for themselves.
Well, we, just to be clear, we've, we've factored that piece in.
They did factor it. Okay.
So, you know, that 12,000 or whatever that number was in savings in utility costs is providing that 200,000 or whatever the number is of additional renovation that we can do. And so we're, you know, trying to use every means we can through multiple financing sources, as well as through savings and, and operations to be able to do all the work that we want to do.
The third item I want to raise is more of a comment. And I raised this before with you. It's my observation. It's a personal opinion, basically, that one of the reasons properties remain affordable is that they aren't really totally renovated. Because it, it just becomes impossible to recoup the costs of the renovation when you have very low rents, low-market rents, given the cost of construction and financing and so on. So my own personal preference about how I would like to see MHP operate if I were, you know, in charge, would be to do the minimum renovation possible, rather than the approach which, it appears to my untrained eye, that you, you approach, which is to do pretty much the maximum that, not that you could do, but the maximum that seems pretty reasonable. So for me, I would rather see less renovation being done. And that would help keep the price down. And then that would make it possible to do a lower, ask a lower pilot from the city, because of the reasons of my fellow council members. I think it is a, it's reasonable to ask. Other property owners must be asking, why don't they get, you know, why don't they get a pilot on the order of 100% like MHP does? And, you know, one explanation is, well, you do a lot more, you really do renovate the things. But the question is then, well, what if you scaled that back?
Right.
Closer to what other owners might consider doing. So that's my sort of observation. I'll let you comment on it.
Yep, sure. We've tried both. We have properties, especially our smaller properties, where we, you know, and maybe Edinburgh is an example. We go to the bank for all it can support. We get some gap financing from the county, do the minimal renovation that one can do. And I have to say, our experience, for the most part, has not been positive. The properties have just had extremely high operating costs. The, you know, you're constantly dealing with the, the next problem or the next thing that needs to be worked on. And you're really doing it with little capital. You, the time we have to sort of raise the capital and put the money into the building is at the beginning, you know, at refinancing or when we first buy the property. We put it all together and we really look at the systems and we really look at it for the long term. That's the time we can raise capital. It's, once you're operating it, no one, none of the sort of funding sources that we go to want to just pay for operating costs. They feel like that's, that's sort of the owner's responsibility, which means that, that means, and we're sort of at a, at a sort of cart because we can't and we don't wish to raise the rents substantially, but there are certain needs that go on. And so, so, and, and so what, what we find is, we, you know, we limp along until, you know, we do what we need to do and we take a lot of pride in the buildings, but we feel like it's not up to the standard that we feel that the residents should have. And so our preference has been, you know, to have, you know, a, a building that, you know, our feeling is that, you know, lives up to certain standards. And we feel like it's easier in the long run to put the, raise the capital upfront. You take advantage of this, you know, bond program at 4%. We can raise a lot of capital that way. If we didn't take advantage of this program and we did the moderate, and to do, take advantage of that program, we have to put in a substantial amount. We have to do the work that we're talking about doing. If we don't take advantage of that program, now we're talking about, you know, 7%, 7%, 4%, 7% interest. We don't have, you know, so that we're not able to raise as much capital. We don't do as much work. And in the long run, the building is, is, is just not operated the way we feel. And, you know, I think as you, I think as you identified, there are a number of, I mean, there's a certain number of buildings in the city that, you know, like the buildings that we've taken on, that where the owners just put the minimal that they needed to put in. And that the residents really suffered. I mean, and, you know, when, as you said, I've gotten both at 641 Houston and at the property we did on Flower, we just did, where residents, it was residents who finally said, "We've had enough. We can't take the condition that we're stuck with. And we want to live in a decent place." And they somehow, you know, get ahead of it, you know, one step ahead of the code enforcement people. And I don't know how, because when you look at the condition of the building, it shouldn't be up to code. But they somehow get through it. And, but it's not a standard that, you know, it's affordable, as you said, because it's in a poor condition. And so our, you know, a combination of our preference, but also taking advantage of these funding sources, our preference would be, and in the age of this property and where the systems are, it needs, you know, I'm not sure there is a minimal renovation here. And, and one of the things we face is when you start one thing, it leads to the next thing. And then, you know, the grandfathering clause is no longer applies. And now you've got to do the sprinkler system and, you know, you upgrade this and upgrade that to certain code requirements. And, you know, before you know it, unfortunately, you're up to a very high number. So it's, it's, it's a struggle. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure what is those things that we could even cut from some of this stuff. When you really look at the systems and the other things, it's, it's, it's not like for us, it's not like we're feeling like it's a luxury. Any of this stuff's, stuff is luxury. It's really what we feel is the bare necessities to operate a building effectively.
Hi.
Hello.
I had, I started kind of doing a numbers analysis of this in my own primitive way. And the more I've heard my colleagues talk and the more I heard you talk, the more uncomfortable I've gotten, honestly. To just go down in the weeds for a second, I'll bet when you finish this, if you work on the, where you, where you're headed, that that HVACC system outside is going to be quieter. Right now, it's pretty noisy. But some of my concerns are, it's assessed at 2 million, 2, 2,144,000. And you're anticipating putting 9.6 million into it, which is five times its current value.
Let me, I think there's a misstatement or a statement that leading to a misinterpretation.
Okay.
And that is the total development cost, including effectively the price of the building is included in that. So the actual renovation cost is, is lower than 9.6.
So you already own the building?
And it's, it's a, I won't say it's a gain, but it's a tax credit. Because we're using tax credits, we effectively have to quote, "sell" the building to a partnership. We're putting the money back in of the proceeds of it, but we need to get the quote basis for it, so we can maximize the amount of tax credits we can get in the building. So it, it effectively, that 9.6 includes a mark, a, an appraised value of the building and what have you.
So is it 9.6 minus 2.1?
Uh.
Or 7.5?
You know, the financing costs and other that. It, the renovation, just the hard cost on the renovations is in the neighborhood of 3, $3 million, lower than $3 million.
Okay. So the, there's 9.6, knock out the 2.1 in the assessment, knock out the 3 million in the renovation. There's another 3.5 million dollars there that are allocated to something. I don't know what they are.
Architects and lawyers and you just all the.
Three, more, so it's going to cost more for the incidentals than the actual renovation? I'm, I don't, we don't need to get that deep into the weeds, but I'm, I'm feeling very uncomfortable. In my, in my other little calculations, at the $2 million, it's 46,000 of value per unit. 45 units, about $46,000 per unit is the current value, if you will, of the assessment divided by the number of units. I took the 9.6 and divided it up and it looked like you were going to spend 215,000 per unit. But now I understand that you'll only, you'll spend 3,000 or?
I spent about 70,000.
3 million per unit. So it's.
No, not per unit. About 70,000 per unit.
So you'll, you'll add in another 70,000 per unit, which are currently, they currently have a value of about 46, 47,000 per unit. So you'll add, you'll spend, getting close to twice as much as they're currently valued at. Not quite, but on the, on, and I'm still wondering where that other 3, 3.5 million went. But it also says here that, that the figure of the tax of the pilot that we would grant to you doesn't include the added value that you put to the property. So that the pilot that's calculated here is based on the 2 million assessment. But you're saying that the property's going to be worth 9.6 million in the end. So that's five times as much. And so if I do that little calculation, instead of us putting on the table 124,000 for the, the property tax loss, we'd be putting on somewhere in the order of 600,000 in property tax loss. Or somewhere between 124 and 600, depending again on how, where the numbers, how the numbers wash out. I, I understand that I was, I had a misconception about, about how much you were putting in. And so I understand that that makes, that there's a difference there. And I'll finally come around. And I don't need a full kind of feedback on all these numbers, but I'm just telling you that it got me real edgy. And I'm going to come back and finish with a, a kind of a continuation of Terry's question, which is, what's the difference between your projects and other property owners in the, in the city, in our city? And I listened carefully to what you were saying, that other property owners can't take advantage of bond sales or, so they can't take advantage of the 4% as opposed to the 7% financing. Your, your projects are able to, they, you don't comply with our rent stabilization. So I'm trying to figure out how it is that, that we are allowing you to, to avoid our rent stabilization guidelines and law. And I'm, I guess it's because you're committing to keep properties low-income. In a nutshell, is that, is that the correct answer there?
It's a, two things. One, and there's one distinction between us and the other owners. Other owners don't make any commitment to the, the income of the tenants they have.
Okay. I understand that.
So we commit to, you know.
All right. So you commit to having low-income tenants?
Yep.
So that's one. That's an advantage, sure.
And then two, we commit to. And then two, we commit to a, the county, effectively, the county tells us a rent, gives us a rent stabilization number, so that we have to commit to that too.
And that is derived from what formula?
I couldn't tell you. I just get the number from them.
Okay.
So the county has a.
I never understood your number, I never understood. I'm not understanding our number is not, is, I completely understand that. No, I'm just kidding. But I, I'd like to know what the county's number is and where that comes from, and, and how it is that then we're supporting your, the MHP, and the, I know that you've spin off a different company for each project. So how does, I'm kind of with Terry, how does that work? We, we allow you to avoid our laws and then we sign on to the county guidelines for what a low income is. So I'm kind of back, I don't want to go on and on, and I've already overshot my three minutes or however many I'm trying to get, we're all trying to get to here and discussing things at this late hour, and they say that after 10, it's all over anyway as far as mental acuity. So I'm kind of with Terry in that I don't think we have enough information here to, I don't think I have enough information to make a decision, and I, and I am, I will say, I'm very uncomfortable with 100% pilot, very uncomfortable. I'm more with Colleen on no pilot, maybe 25 for a while or something like that, and I'm, but that's for a later, later discussion. Thank you.
And before I go to Councilmember Schultz, I just want to, there was one thing that you said, Councilmember Robinson, that I wanted to make sure that everybody remembers. When you were talking about the assessed value and if they were putting however many million into it, the assessed value might go up by that, remember that in multifamily property, the assessed value is based on the income you can get from the property, not what you put into it. So they could put $10 million into the property and their assessed value might not go up at all.
It just might be a poor business decision.
Not just trying to apply, provide quality for housing, it's a subsidized product, right? It's like an intention to subsidize so that people get lower rents.
Right.
It's not a business decision.
I'm curious, speaking of the assessment, what, how proximate is the 2010 assessment of 2.1 million to the current market value of that property? Is there any relationship whatsoever?
I, I don't know. I mean, we, I mean, at some point, we'll have an appraisal. We don't, I don't think we, I'm not sure if the bank or the state has given us those numbers at appraisal, but, yeah.
I guess I, the reason I ask the question is that, having been in commercial financing and referencing Mayor Williams' comment, his, his observation about how these things are appraised, is that there could well be a huge difference between the tax assessment and what it's market value.
I mean, I, I, just off the cuff, I would, you know, add whatever, 40-some thousand a unit, that's probably on the low side from buildings that we see sold and, you know, and what have you.
Oh, thank, oh, thank you. I have some other questions. When, when your, when, when your organization was laying out its pro formas for this project, were you, did you include a pilot, our pilot into that? Those, those pro formas, I mean, or was this something you had to figure out how to make it work because you couldn't assume automatically that you have a pilot? Do you recollect?
Well, I think there's a combination. We thought we had a pilot, didn't realize when it was expiring, but as we, you know, we do our due diligence and get to the bottom of it, we realized it, you know, was expiring, now it's expired. And, you know, as we put it together, we're, it's like a request, so we, you know, but there's lots of things on our pro forma that we are, you know, hoping to get. A request to the county for a certain amount of money, a request to the state, a request to the city, that's our sort of wish list of financing sources. We go to each one of those saying, this is our plan, our tentative plan, and we are going to get approvals and commitments from each one of them. So we're here tonight for that, for this aspect of this sort of overall plan. As you, you know, it's a moving target, so as, as one says no, you know, you're working to find, figure out how you fill those gaps and, you know, put a plan together that works. But, you know, at the, at the end of the day, this is, I'll be honest, this is a, we're, to do all this, it's a very tight deal. And we're trying to make it work and we need all the sources we can and, and then some. And, you know, we've gone back to this county for some additional funding, gone back to the state for additional funding. When numbers come in, when the contractor says, well, this is the real number, the number you had penciled in isn't the real number, you, you know, you're constantly shuffling all this stuff together.
I understand.
I'd say at this point in time, this is an extremely tight deal that needs all the sources it can, and we've gone to, we've gone to the state for more, we've gone to the county for more. We really need this to make it work. And, you know, as I said, we, we, as you guys have seen, we take pride in these buildings, we do, you know, extremely good job at what we do, and we, we, the residents are happy that we keep the buildings affordable and, and something that the residents feel is good. And, you know, I can't say enough, when, you know, it's hard to say what the comparison is, but the end of the day, I, I think you, you see that we are putting in far more than the typical owner because we're taking a long-term perspective on this and not patching things together. And I think, the end of the day, I think you should take pride in that this, you're getting something for it. And, you know, I think on Flower Avenue, you can get just a patched-up building, you know, where just the, you know, just things operational, you've got also something that added value to the, to the neighborhood, so that, I mean, I don't have the pictures here, but Councilmember Snipper can, can attest that, you know, that the look of the building, I have some here, but the look of the building is substantially improved so that.
No question.
That other people will invest in their properties, take, you know, and, you know, the city can benefit from the tax revenue in that, in that respect also.
All right, let me finish. I, I, I think you gave very good and complete answers and understandable answers to some of the questions that have been raised as to, like, for example, Councilman Snipper's question as to why you want to maximize your capital at the start and not kind of do a, the minimum renovation rather than, you know, and I understand that. So I appreciate that and I think you're right and I agree with you. And I also understand the, your answer to the earlier question raised by Councilman Simmons as to, you know, what's, what's in it for the city of Tacoma Park, and a fact, which is to say, and you said this several times, that what we're getting here is a 30-year commitment, that you're going to be providing income units that will meet a certain income standard for 30 years, which nobody else in Tacoma Park in the market is, is going to do. They'd be insane to do that. So, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your, what, what you're saying, and I, and I, and given that commitment, I think that some kind of a pilot is absolutely appropriate. The, the, the other side of the case has already been well-stated, is that these are tough times, not only for, for developers, but especially tough for the municipalities. And our, our particular municipality, because we have a finite number of places we can go to get money under state law, and all of those doors have been slammed in our face this year and have been told that we're not going to even get what we expected to, or had preliminarily been told we were going to get. And so we're, like you, in a very tight situation, and it doesn't look promising. So therefore, I'd be kind of reluctant to go with 100% pilot, but I certainly would support 50% pilot on this, based on everything you've said tonight, and I think you've made a pretty good case. I appreciate it.
And I'm kind of in the same place as Councilmember Schultz, just ended. I, I think it's, it's clear that you all do quality work, you're committed to doing what you do, and by the nature of your financing, you're locking in those commitments for long term. And we, we have essentially made the, the decision over the last few years that for projects such as yours, that we, because of the commitment for the income requirements, that that is a different way of providing affordable housing other than the model in some of the other units in the city, which is rent control. So I think a pilot is in order. I too am uncomfortable with 100%. I feel like everybody has to kind of have some skin in the game, and as Councilmember Schultz pointed out, it's, it's a whole lot more difficult to just say yes to various requests for 100%. I don't know whether the number is 50%, I don't know whether the number is 75%, and I don't know whether the term is 10 years or whether the term is longer, whether it's better to go a little higher for a shorter term and see what things look like in 10 years when I'm assuming that you'll come back and say, gee, it really would be good to extend this. I don't particularly want to go for lock us in for 30 years, and so I, I guess I tend to kind of, in unbalance with all of that, think that something, something more than 50% for 10 years would be something that we should be able to commit to there. Councilmember Clay?
Fascinating. Just a couple of other comments. It's, it's unusual that Dan and I are thinking the same thing around numbers, but it was in fact happening tonight, because I calculated out $213,333, $333 per unit, but then I guess that didn't include the, the current assessed value, which means that the input per unit is $167,333, which is a pretty significant per unit.
He was talking about 70,000.
Well, he's talking about $70,000 in actual work that gets done to the unit, but the, but the total cost, because there's that $300,000 that.
3 million.
I'm sorry, $3 million that's floating out there somewhere, makes the cost of that $167,000, and you have to say, you know, what's the opportunity cost of that? Could we give people $167,000 and have them, you know, buy a condo somewhere? Certainly, they could, they could sell the whole building and give everybody that lives in it the $213,333, and they could certainly buy a condo for that and for what they pay in rent, could pay their condo fees and taxes. And the existing unit would, would still stay affordable for the 15 or 25 years that you have left on your existing affordability agreement with the county. So just a couple of the numbers, I think that the 2.1 million is right on, because a couple of years ago, Sarah said that the average cost of a, of an apartment or, or a unit like this in Montgomery County was $50,000, which calculates out to 2.25 million, and it's probably a little less now, so probably 2.1 million is probably a fair assessment. And so what we, what we get out of the additional affordability years, depending on whether or not they're currently in a 30-year term, or if they're in a standard Montgomery County 40-year term, is only either five additional years of affordability if it's currently a 40-year term, or 15 years of additional affordability. So it's not 30 years of additional affordability, it's only five or 15 years.
Well, he claims they're extending it.
Right.
I asked specifically about that.
No, he said it's from the date of the, of when the loan.
Of the new closing.
Right.
Isn't that what you said?
Yeah, which is, which is.
30 years from the new closing.
2010.
Right.
Just so you go to 2014.
But it's, it's already encumbered under affordability until.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, until.
We're 15 years in right now.
Yeah, we're 15, so there's another 15 years left. So when you add on to that, you're either adding five years or 15 years, depending on what the existing term is. The difference in renovations to the unit based on the $200,000 of value that they say they can buy with our pilot is 4444 in total cost, so in actual renovations, it's about $2,200 per unit. And the last point that I will make is that using a 4% tax credit from the state in this fashion right now to redo this, that $167,000 worth of renovations per unit is, again, in terms of opportunity costs, other properties that aren't being purchased and brought into affordability, because that's how the tax credit is being expended.
But I, I just, that won't be in Tacoma Park, though. That's an opportunity cost that you're providing for Frederick or some other part of the state.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I don't feel guilty about the level of, of affordable housing that's provided by the city of Tacoma Park in any way whatsoever. And in fact, I think that there are some places, like, that maybe could stand to have some more affordable housing. I've lived in communities where I felt guilty about the level of affordable housing, that the people of the city, myself, one of them, were willing to work towards putting that. I don't feel that way here.
I just say two things. One, and this is just because we're at the level, where we are in the process, it could be, is likely that with the county, we may have another 40 years. It's just not clear right now. Could be, we definitely be 30 years with the state, to extend our agreements to the county, that could be another 40 years. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that tonight, so that's why I'm not committing to the, we're telling you it's 40 years, I'm happy to commit to 40 years.
You say another 40 years mean on top of?
40 years from the date we're now.
No, he means from the date of the call.
As opposed to the, and I'm happy to commit to 40 years if that will, you know, if that will help with the discussion. And, yeah, and I think that, last thing I'll say is, it is a means of, it's not just a means of providing affordable housing, it's also a means of capital to do this type of renovation. And I think what you see is that oftentimes, the tax credit is, is married with substantial renovations because it's a means of, of being able to do that type of work. So what the city gets as a benefit is capital that's invested in the city that would otherwise not be invested in the city. And, and that's what, I think, the benefit of that program. If without that program, I, you wouldn't get, we wouldn't do this renovation, we just couldn't. We would limp along and, you know, do, just patch here and there, and, you know, the building would, you know, event, over time, go down. I mean, it's just, that's just the simplicity of it. It, it needs capital, and this is a means of providing the capital while maintaining the affordability. And, you know, when you see out in the, in the marketplace, those, those people putting that amount of money are making them condos when the condo market was hot, and when it's not, they, you know, to the extent they could, will even do it in today's market, which most, almost everyone, most people won't at all, but because they can't get the financing and the numbers won't work. But when they were or they could, it's, it's a means of getting it to the luxury apartment building to get the higher rent and displacing the resident. That's how the, that's how the marketplace has worked.
It's a glut of rental housing on the market right now.
I'll remind my colleagues we're an hour in at this point. Councilmember.
After two hours on speed.
My comments are exactly designed to try and bring us to closure on this topic.
All right, go, Josh, go.
So, you know, I think there was a lot of questions about the financing, right, like, and tax credit deals are incredibly complex and the numbers thrown around are kind of hard to understand. So I do think it would be helpful to the council to get some detail on the financing and maybe provide it up to staff, but I think that would, A, help us. B, I think it would be helpful, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but it would be helpful for me to understand what the difference is for the project if we give you 100 versus 50 in a concrete way, so that when we have this, I assume we're going to vote on this at some point, whether it's going to be 0, 50, or 100, or 25, or whatever the number is, to kind of know what those different things mean for the structure of the, the deal. And I know there's a lot of moving parts, but it gives, it would help to give us a sense of, you know, does that mean X is not going to happen in the project, or, you know, Y is not going to happen for the, I think it's $12,000 a year and $120,000 over the course of the project we're putting in. So I think if that could be given back to us, then we'd be able to make an informed decision. I think that votes are up here for some sort of subsidy, not, maybe not for everybody, but I think you'd find four votes for some sort of subsidy. I think the question is how much of a subsidy.
And if we just remember that, given the history of doing pilots, when they're 10-year pilots, the request comes for a renewal and extension. pilots, the request comes for a renewal, an extension, so that whatever figures we see long-term, it's like if, if we say yes to something now, more than likely, it will be extended.
Well, that, we can ask them that too. Are you going to come back in 10 years, ask us for an extension?
Well, I mean, I think what, what we always face is, I mean, what we always face is, where are we in 10 years? I mean, I, I don't know, you know, and, you know, if the property's performing well and doesn't need a pilot, and it's, you know, oftentimes there's those first few years, I mean, the county on, you know, you know, I mean, we're probably, well, I won't go there, but, I mean, the county gives us a full pilot, but there's generally this notion of that's first, that's first few years of sort of being a stabilization, stabilization period. So in 10 years, you know, it helps to, with all this additional debt, to be able to stabilize the property, you know, does it over time? Does it perform so that it's, you know, do these numbers I even give you, you know, projections that we think about for 15, 30 years even come true? I mean, who, who really know? I mean, after a few years, it's conjecture. I mean, but, you know, and so I think in the past, to the extent we've come back to you, we've shown you that there was a need, but doesn't mean that there's always a need. I mean, some properties perform well and, you know, and, you know, but other times you have insurance costs that just go through the roof and unexpectedly that you don't really control or something else. And so I, I, I can't tell you what, you know, where we are in 10 years, but obviously our goal would be not to. I mean, I, I, obviously, we don't, don't do it lightly, we, you know, we, we only make these requests when we really feel it's necessary. We, you know, we, we feel, as a, as a nonprofit, we also feel, we try to be stewards of the money and the benefits that we get and we try to be good stewards of that. And we like to feel like that people, when they see what we do, that we are being good stewards of their money. And so we don't take these lightly, we don't come to you just for the sake of coming to you.
I think in that financing numbers would be helpful to know what the, the development fee that MHP gets out of the whole arrangement would also, I think, put people's, more at ease.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. You made the point about providing housing for low income, which is certainly the, the goal of our rent stabilization program. And I think the biggest difference is that our rent control rents escalate based on cost of living, where your rents escalate based on income in the community. So I think there, that's pretty equal. And I think what we're really talking about here at the council is, is more than the Edinburgh House or MHP. And I appreciate your coming here as you have and, and kind of express your, your needs and the need to do this, but what I hear you saying, you know, I represent a ward that has, it's primarily rental income, rental housing and, you know, garden apartments, high-rise apartments. And what I'm hearing you say here tonight, in advance of having a problem, is what I hear the apartment owners along Maple Avenue saying the same thing, that they cannot maintain their buildings with the income levels that they're getting from rent control. And we've argued that, you know, that that's their business problem, they should be better managing their buildings and, and more fiscally responsible so that they do maintain the buildings. Yet I have, you know, buildings in the neighborhood and you recently purchased one that just, you know, fell more and more into disrepair to where it was no longer habitable. And so I, I would suggest to my colleagues that, you know, the, the arguments that we're hearing here tonight for a reason to support the Edinburgh House are, they're either not justification for a, a pilot, or they are justification for providing the same type of relief to other apartment owners within the city. And so the question I think really on the table is, are we willing to offer a pilot to the owners of other buildings on Maple Avenue in exchange for a similar commitment that, that MHP is making, for a long-term commitment to moderate to low-income rents? And if we're not willing to do it for the rent-controlled properties, then I have a problem with, with voting to give it to MHP in this situation. Now, the other ones where you're picking up a building that is, you know, needs the renovation to get it back on air is different from this, which is an ongoing building that you've been running for a number of years, because you're in the same situation that everybody else going down the street is in of running an apartment building and trying to serve low-income residents. And so I guess the, I can't see how I can face the other apartment owners and say, no, you don't get a pilot if, if we give you a pilot. And I, and I can't see where the difference is and I'm certainly have an open mind because I love the work you do, I love you being here in Tacoma Park, I want you to, to continue to buy buildings here in Tacoma Park. But I think the, the problem that we're discussing tonight is bigger than just the Edinburgh House. And in the interest of time, I'll let Councilmember Robinson go.
Except Councilmember Schultz is next.
Yeah, well, I, I would just say that on, based on, if Councilman Tarris, I mean, Councilman Siemens' argument, we would probably auto-get rid of all the pilots in, in the city. Because if we're not going to give it to you, why should we give it to any of the other MHP buildings? But also, I, I was struck by your comment that, that the, our rent stabilization is designed to preserve low-income housing. I don't know that it's designed to preserve housing for low-income people so much as it is to preserve affordable housing for a whole range of income levels. Maybe it's a semantics thing, I don't want to like the big deal out of it. But in any case, that's, that's, that's our, that's our law and that's what we're trying to protect. What you were talking about earlier a few minutes ago, just in somebody else's question about the need to stabilize the rents in the Edinburgh after the project's completed, and that got me to thinking, well, given the scope of the renovations, I guess, are you going to be dislocating tenants from that building or are you going to be kind of working around it or what?
Our, our goal is twofold. Basically move, moving tenants around in the building. And so there's, should not many people leave, so we may not be achieving what I'm about to say, but if, if someone were to leave, and this is what we typically do in a building like this, would be as people left between now and when the start of construction, we would not refill that unit, create a certain number, let's say five to 10 vacant units, move people around the building and, you know, basically put all the, whether we do it by floor by floor or stacks, but move people so we, the contractors can come in, fix up those units, and then we move the tenants sort of around the building. As I said, I'm not expecting that many people to leave. The other option we have is that Maple Towers will be done in short order, you know, not short order, but at, at a certain point in time. And we could look to move tenants over there into a newly renovated unit if folks want to do that. But our goal is to kind of have a few units and so the contractors can come in, not disturb the residents, and kind of move tenants around and do the renovation.
How long do you think the renovation should, should, should take? I realize you can't predict, but-
Yeah, we're, our goal is to push the contractor for a one-year renovation period.
One-year renovation.
Yeah, we'll take a little doing, but that's our goal.
I think one of the points that I want to make, this isn't a question, but it's just, it's, it's based on the quality of the work that MHP has done in, in the city on, on project, is that the Edinburgh Building, I don't know how the building it is per se, I just know when you bought it, but obviously it needs renovation. And if you were to sell the building and say, well, we're just not going to use this for low-income housing anymore, then, then we've, we've got an old building on our hands in the city. So while it's one, there's an argument to be made that, you know, we got a lot of affordable housing and one way or another, 45 units one way or the other, if whether it's here or somewhere, or in Frederick County, it's not going to make a big deal, a difference. And I can understand that, that argument, but, but we do have a physical building here and if you guys don't renovate it, then who's going to do it? Because you, if you went back into the open market, subject to rent stabilization, our law, you'd have a hard time finding somebody who would wanted to buy that building and, and do a really nice renovation job. And, and so I think one of the things we need to think, take, take into consideration is that having you guys sustain this, sustain your ownership of the building and do a really high-quality renovation like you've done on other projects in the city, is that we end up benefiting by having a really nice-looking apartment building that doesn't look like your stereotypical public housing. And when you have facilities, buildings that look like that, you, it, it affects people's sensibilities about their community. It, it reduces crime, I mean, and all those other kinds of things. And I, and I think that that's an important, important, an important value that as a city council, we, we want to take into account so that we know that in a year's time or something like that, we're going to have a building that's going to look really nice and challenge other owners in the, in, in that part of the city to maintain their buildings as well. So that's just a point that I want to make. Thank you.
I just thank my colleague that both rent control and MHP provides affordable housing, not low-income housing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I just have a, I hope a quick clarification. The amount of debt that you would end up would be $9.6 million? Is that the note, the bond, the life size of the bond that you're anticipating?
And then, that's just the bond, there'll be many notes and-
Okay.
The total may be around that, but the, the bond itself is about $3 million.
Okay. So the total encumbrance will be $9.6 million? Total financial encumbrance, is that correct?
Pretty close, yep.
Okay.
So basically all these sort of soft things we get from the county and all that, they all get structured as loans.
Yeah, I'm trying to-
I'm sorry, actually, wait, hold on, wait, I'm just, just, 1.7 million is the tax credit equity, so that's coming in not as a loan.
Okay. Trying to wrap my head around this, it's a two-point, assessed at 2.14 million dollars. And when the project's over, there'll be, other than at one point, whatever you just mentioned, the rest will be debt on it. So it'll be encumbered to the tune of 7, 7.5 or something million dollars. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. Thank you.
I don't think we have consensus tonight on where we want to go. I don't hear it, I don't see it. I think this will need further discussion. Councilmember Siemens.
Well, I think, I think I did hear that people were supportive of something in the range of 50%. I mean, there was some variation on how much, how high people would go and how low people wanted to go and so on, but I did hear a range of comments in that general vicinity. So I wouldn't say it's no, I wouldn't say it's no-
Well, maybe we could take a straw poll of who would support 50 if provided more information on the development deal.
Yeah.
I, I would support that. I guess I'm the only one.
No, you're not the only one. I mean, I'm waiting for Bruce to say something like that.
I thought he asked the question, he put it out there, now I'm looking for other hands.
Well, my hand.
How many people are, at this point in time, with the information available, ready for no pilot?
With the information? None.
With the information, yeah.
So therefore, I think more information is needed or we're not going to get very far because we're going to be arguing pilot, no pilot, never mind the percentage. So much as I hate to say it, we're going to have to revisit this.
Do you have any time constraints on this? I know when you've come here in the past, you've always brought, brought a short fuse with you.
So it's not hard and fast, I guess, but I guess in order for the other people to kind of get their pieces to their committees and to get their approvals, they need to know whether this is going to happen or not. So I'd say 30 days, give or take some, I mean, there's some flexibility there, yeah. But we have maybe some indications or what have you, and maybe not an official vote, it probably could work and things like that. So there's a little flexibility, but 30 days would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.